The time being 9:00 AM on Saturday, May 10, 2025. I will call this annual town meeting to order. Good morning and welcome to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. My name is Jim Salvi, 74 West Acton Road. I'm the town moderator and I'll be presiding over today's meeting. First of all, thank you very much for swimming here today in this May downpour. As you know, town meeting is where the town gathers as a legislature to govern its affairs, to appropriate funds, to enact bylaws, and accomplish other tasks. Generally speaking, any resident who wishes to speak to a subject relevant to the meeting may do so, but may have to wait for the appropriate time. And to encourage participation, no one can monopolize the floor. If you're still checking in, maybe we could just keep it a little bit quiet because I've started the meeting. And if you're checking in, you'll have plenty of time to find your seat before I'm done with my remarks. So let me introduce the cast of characters today. On the stage with me are Town Clerk Linda Hathaway, Assistant Town Clerk De Scythe is over by the checkers, Town Council Lauren Goldberg, Tanner Peterson from Meridia Interactive Solutions in the back, that's the vendor for the clickers, IT Director Ron Eld is with his child in Washington DC for college graduation. We will need a deputy moderator for those articles where I need to take a break or I can't preside. The charter says that the deputy moderator is nominated by the moderator and town meeting gets to vote on that nomination. So let's use that as a chance to test our clickers. So I nominate Lisa Lavina of Gleesondale Road as deputy moderator. I don't think I need a second, but could I get one anyway? Thank you. This requires a simple majority. Again, we're going to use our clickers as a test. And voting, so the question is on the nomination of Lisa Lavina as deputy moderator. Simple majority, voting will be open for 15 seconds, starting now. And voting is closed. And by, the vote passed, although it's not telling me yeses and nos. All right, that's, let's move on. The vote on Lisa Lavina's deputy moderator obviously passed. On the floor in front of, on the floor in front of me and facing you is the Select Board and the Town Administrator, Board Chair J.T. Tool, members Ingaborg Hegeman Clark, Megan Birch-McMichael, Hector Constanzos, and Courtney Freesha, and of course, Town Administrator Denise Demkosky. Your warrant contains recommendations from the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is an independent committee established by Charter to review all articles and make recommendations to town meeting. They're seated in the audience, and I would appreciate if they would raise their hands when I call their names, Chair Brian Pachudo, Members Tom Farnsworth, Kevin Gross, Jeff Kimmelman, Dan Peterson, and Associate Member Angela Zhang. We'll also be hearing from the Capital Planning Committee with recommendations on capital items. They're also seated in the audience, Chair Steve Jelenik, David Arseneault, Ed DeLuca, Brian Pachudo from the FinCom, Select Board Member J.T. Tool, and Associate Member Missy Reed. Sadly, Town Meeting Time no longer refers to persons from out of town as strangers. But I have grown very fond of that term, so I'm going to use it anyway. On this slide in front of you are a bunch of strangers that we might want to hear from. They are mostly town employees, school employees, town council. So I will make a motion to allow these strangers to address us. I could use a second. Thank you. And we'll just use our cards for this. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your cards. Thank you. And those opposed, and the motion passes. Now what you'll be voting on today will be the main motions made under each article, which will usually be made by a Select Board Member. These motions are allowed to differ at least a little bit from the language that's in the warrant. The warrant articles are really just a notice of what might be voted on. I do expect a few of the main motions today to differ from the warrant language, and those differences will be explained. And in any event, all of the motions will be on the screen in front of you. Please pay attention to the language of the motion and not the warrant article. Our debate is, as you know, is governed by a procedural manual called Town Meeting Time that is usually found in the library. Town Meeting Time is not in the library right now because there is a brand-new edition of Town Meeting Time. So that didn't get the ripple of excitement that I was hoping for. But I will tell you that in the moderator world, there is nothing more exciting than a new edition of Town Meeting Time. Actually, it's okay that it isn't in the library because, to tell you the truth, the new edition isn't that different than the old one. We're also governed by rules found in the town bylaws and town meeting traditions. And over time, the moderators of Stowe have developed a 15-page handbook that summarizes the important rules. That handbook is available on the town website. There's also 10 reference copies available over by the checkers. I'm just going to cover the highlights here. No cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts except as I may direct to recognize accomplishments. No one speaks unless recognized by the moderator, but to be recognized by the moderator is very simple. You go to the microphone, you say your name, your street, and you address all remarks to me, not to anyone else, by starting with Mr. Moderator or Madam Moderator if Lisa is presiding. We'll have a time limit of two minutes per question or comment. Two minutes is a very long time. The Army says that that's long enough for you to do 71 push-ups. Speakers can have one follow-up question of up to one minute after they receive a response to their question. A very short statement counts as your follow-up, so please use it wisely. Repeated questioning until you receive an answer that you think is satisfactory won't be allowed. If you receive an answer to your question that you don't think is responsive, you can use your follow-up to either ask it again, or you can highlight that fact by saying, "I don't think that answered my question, but thank you." Please keep your remarks confined to whatever motion is pending at that moment, or you risk being ruled out of order. Please use only language that you would use if your mother were here. And please, no attacks on personalities. Let's be tough on the issues but gentle on the people. Please put any amendments to motions that you propose in writing on a form that is available on that table on this side of the checkers, and there's a green sign that says "Motion Amendment." It helps tremendously when people put it in writing, and the residents of Stowe have always been good about that. If you have a question during town meeting, please either ask it from the mic if you think a lot of people might have the same question. Otherwise, please get the attention of Deputy Moderator Lisa Lavina and ask her your question rather than interrupt the proceedings. She'll let me know if it's something that I should be aware of or the whole meeting should be aware of. But if you think I made a procedural error, or if something or someone is preventing you from hearing or participating, you can say "point of order" at any time. In Stowe, our tradition is to allow debate to proceed for 30 minutes, at which time I'll accept a motion to call the question. Call the question means end debate. If you think you've heard enough before 30 minutes has expired, you can still make a motion to call the question, but if I don't think that all the issues have been aired or that a significant number of people are waiting to speak, I might ask you to renew that motion after 30 minutes has expired. Kids are welcome at town meeting, but if the crushing boredom or the inherent lameness of the proceedings forces behavior that interferes with the ability of others to participate, please be courteous and maybe take a walk in the back, or I believe the library is open. So that ends the discussion of the rules. And before we begin, a few recognitions. Several of our elected officials are ending their terms at next week's election. Courtney Freesha on the Select Board, Mike Kopczynski of the Housing Authority, and Marcy Eckel and Rachel Flaherty, both on the Randall Library Trustees. Serving as an elected official takes a lot of time and effort, so let's take a moment to express our appreciation to these individuals. On a much sadder note, we lost a number of former employees and committee members in the past year, including several long-term town volunteers who were rightly considered to be institutions of the town. Please join me in a moment of silence in memory of all these individuals who we lost in the past year. Stowe TV is recording this meeting, and it'll be broadcast on cable and I think posted to YouTube. Special thanks to all those who pulled this town meeting together, especially Stowe TV, the IT Department, Meridia, the Town Clerk's Office, all of our checkers, Lisa Lavina, technical volunteer Kate West, the Town Administrator, and the Select Board's Office. And finally, I want to note something very special. As many of you know, this year is the 250th anniversary of the shot heard around the world in Lexington and Concord. The Town of Stowe participated actively in the revolution. Henry Gardner, a local lawyer and sometimes town meeting moderator, served as provincial treasurer and collected tax revenues that the British very much wanted to get their hands on. But perhaps most importantly, on April 19, 1775, 81 men from this town grabbed their guns, left their farms, to fight the British incursion into this area. I believe their precise actions that day are still debated, but what is known is that they marched to Concord and pursued the redcoats during the rolling battle of that day with such vigor as to deserve special mention according to official records. 81 people at that time constituted about 9% of the town's population. That would be the equivalent of us fielding a military force of about 650 people. The Town Clerk's Office dug through the vaults, and as a result, in the back at a table by those boards, you'll see copies of minutes from Stowe Town Meetings in 1775. Town meetings were very important to the American Revolution. Those minutes back there are a little tough to read, so the reconstituted Stowe Historical Society has also provided a transcription of a portion of them. I think they're on the left side of that table. It sounds to me like in that portion of the minutes, they're creating what we'd now call a Committee of Correspondence. It's very interesting to read. Also thanks to the Historical Society, we have poster boards with descriptions of other events of that important time over there as well. Please feel free during the meeting to get up and go check out the display. You should be able to hear the debate. Your clickers should work there. I'd recommend you move a little bit in if we have a vote. But again, many thanks to the Town Clerk and the Historical Society for this display. And in honor of the events of 250 years ago, I've asked some of our modern-day Minutemen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen, would you come forward? And as they come forward, I just want to ask, the Stowe Minutemen are a very important institution in this town, a very longstanding institution in this town. How many people in this room have been associated with the Minutemen in the past? Either members, relatives of yours' members? Good for you. Good. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, you want to start us off? Thank you very much. And with that, I believe we are ready for our first motion. Mr. Tool.
Mr. Moderator, I move the reading of the warrant and return of the constable thereon be waived but made a part of the record of this meeting, and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter instead of reading each article in its entirety.
Do I have a second? This article waives the ancient and formal requirement that I read the entire warrant out loud, probably in everyone's interest. Requires a simple majority. We'll just use our cards. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And those opposed. And the motion passes. And we're ready for a motion on Article 1. Ms. Hegeman?
Mr. Moderator. Did you all hear that? I move that the town accept the reports of the Select Board and other officers and committees of the town as printed in the 2024 Annual Town Report.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article 1. This article formally accepts the written reports that, from standing committees, that become part of the 2024 Annual Town Annual Report, which is available, again, over by the checkers. It requires a simple majority, and again, I think we'll just use our cards. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your cards. Thank you. And those opposed. Thank you. That motion passes. Ms. Birch-McMichael, I'm ready for a motion on Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the reports of the special committees as printed in the 2024 Annual Town Report.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article 2. This is the same thing as Article 1, though with regard to special committees. I think an example of that might be the Comprehensive Plan Committee or the Town Hall Reuse Committee, ad hoc committees. Requires a simple majority, and again, I think we'll use our cards. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And those opposed. And that motion passes. That brings us to Article 3. My spouse is an employee of the town. I recuse myself from Articles 3 and 4. And I'm going to turn the chair over to Deputy Moderator Lisa Lavina.
Good morning, everybody. We're going to proceed with Article 3, the Wage and Salary Schedules for Fiscal Year 2026. Ms. Freesha?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town amend Article 11 of the General Bylaws of the Town Personnel Administration by deleting Section 20H, the existing salary schedules, and inserting in place thereof new schedules A, B, C, D, and D as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on Article 3. Do we have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, and we'll use our clickers for this one. And we'll allow 20 seconds to vote, and we're ready now. Okay, and we're done, and it has passed 124 to 3. Okay, now moving on to Article 4, which is the general budget for fiscal year 2026. I'd like to start by explaining the process that we're going to use to manage this. First, we'll have a motion and a second from the board. Second, I'll ask the Town Administrator to address the change in the total budget number as read in the motion from the total printed in the warrant. We'll have a recommendation from the Finance Committee, and then we'll have presentations from representatives from the Neshova Regional School District and the Minuteman Regional Vocational High School. And then we'll proceed to reviewing the line items in the article. So if we can start with a motion, Mr. Constanzos.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $37,580,298 as recommended by the Town Administrator for Items 1 through 82 inclusive, as printed in the warrant, under the column entitled FY 2026 Budget Town Admin Recommended, except with Line Item 78 decreasing to $2,130,968 and Line Item 79 increasing to $656,809. Each item to be considered a separate appropriation for the purposes designated and the same to be expanded only for such purposes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll go to Ms. Demkosky for an explanation about the changes.
Yes, thank you. So this change impacts the Minuteman School budget. The change is actually twofold. First, I had a preliminary budget number in there, which was higher by 20,000. And then the Minuteman School had their excess and deficiency set by the state, which is the equivalent of free cash, and they are only allowed to retain 5%. Anything over 5% has to go back to the member towns. So that will result in an additional $30,000 decrease. So the net change is about a $50,000 overall decrease to the total budget number.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a presentation from Dan Peterson of the Recommendations of the FinCom.
Good morning, folks. So as Brian Pachudo is not able to be here today, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I am stepping in in his place, and we'll walk you through the Finance Committee's report for the Annual Town Meeting. Okay, so we've already gone through the members, don't need to reiterate that. And as I'm sure many of you are aware of, the goal and the purpose of the Finance Committee, we are the official watchdog for the town. We are basically meant to represent the taxpayers and all of us as residents. Our role is primarily advisory, looking and examining the budgets of the various departments, the warrant articles throughout the course of the, especially, winter and spring, making recommendations on each article all the way through the budget, also administering reserve funds of $80,000, making decisions on transfers within that reserve fund, and of course, handling any unforeseen, immediate, and urgent expenditures that may and do come up. With the annual report and the report to town meeting, we are crafting that and drafting that in preparation for this meeting today. So if you look at fiscal year 26, our estimated revenue, you can see almost all comes from the tax levy, local receipts about 5%, state aid 1%, and a very, very, very slim other category, miscellaneous, if you will. Totalling out to $41,988,3568. The stabilization account that we have has grown steadily going back the last five-plus years. You can see that there was certainly a little bit steeper growth around fiscal year 21, '22, and sort of slowing down a little bit in the recent years, '24, '25, and '26. And as we look right now to fiscal year '26, it is looking at $1,625,000 in total. Capital stabilization account right now fiscal year 2026 at $375,000. Okay, so OPEB, also known as Other Post-Employment Benefits, these are the benefits for those serving the town, employed by the town during years of active service. Accounting for liability is created based on agreement to provide benefits, so think health, life insurance, et cetera. It's part of the compensation that employees receive each year, and they are only received after employment has ended. We do contract with an actuary every two years to calculate the future value, and the OPEB liability is paid within, sorry, 30 years. With regards to this, and this is very good news from the Finance Committee, we are ahead of schedule on OPEB. We're doing quite well in this regard. If you look to the trust fund, you can see, and this is definitely something that we look to as worth celebrating, we are almost at 25% funded, just under, with fiscal year '26 represented by the sort of brownish-beige color. You see it's set at $2,215,715. And our recommended expenditures for the fiscal year 2026. So as you can see, nearly 2/3 of the recommended expenditures are boiled down to education. A lot of that just happens to do with the fact that those are our biggest expenses each and every year. They will continue to be. Next up, you have general government, 9%, public safety, 8%, and if you're having trouble reading the other figures, debt is limited at 6% right now, Public Works, 4%, Other, 4%, Tax Recap Assessments at 5%, and the articles before us today at 1%. So this brings it to a total of $39,922,754. Okay, so some of this I've already alluded to, but the budget drivers, we do have municipal IT expenses. There have been talks and movements towards moving the town services into the cloud. Of course, the rising cost of maintaining the municipal infrastructure, think utility, vehicle costs are rising. You know, we see costs rising across many different arenas with the recent inflation and that sort of thing, so the maintenance costs are no exception to that. Of course, the rising cost of health insurance, we're all too aware of that. Municipal debt increases as well for major project that I'm sure you're all very well aware of, the library, Randall Library, and fire truck as well. That was authorized back in 2024. The two districts, the Neshova and the Minuteman Assessments, are up a little over 8%, going up to $25,028,991. And the Neshova Regional School District at $1.3 million. That increase is the debt exclusion on the new high school. So as you, I'm sure, are aware, the decision to fund the high school and move forward with that project came about last year, and so a lot of that has led to increases to budgets, taxes, property taxes, et cetera. The capital articles, so those are looking at right now about 5,000, sorry, $5,190,560. Some of the big projects including this. Some of the big projects including this, the Lake Boone Dam replacement, the town building walkway rebuild, the Sudbury road bridge repair engineering, so right now the evaluation for what is needed there, the school requests, and additional other requests. So as you can see, the greatest of these is the Lake Boone Dam replacement, definitely a necessity, but certainly the steepest of the five requests you see listed here. So recommendations, we have been debating these throughout February, March, and April. We had a public hearing on April 16th, a couple weeks ago, and as the Finance Committee went down through all articles, we reviewed them, reviewed the requests, and made recommended budgets for each department. We recommend favorable action on Article Four in the amount of thirty-seven million, six thirty-three thousand, two forty-three, as presented under the Finance Committee recommended column. All articles have been reviewed, and our recommendations are as indicated in the warrant. And that was, there was certainly a great deal of thought and consideration. No one article was necessarily just a given without our careful assessment. So, one thing that, and this is from Brian, myself, and the other members of the Finance Committee, we encourage residents to get involved. We currently do have open positions as associate members, so those are definitely open seats that we would love and encourage people, folks who are here, folks who are not here that you believe might be interested. We would love to have additional residents learn more about budget and voice their opinions as we go through budget seasons into the future. Can I, we'll pause there? Any questions, comments?
Nope. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Peterson. Next up, we have Ross Mulcarren from the Neshoba Regional School District.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. Just want to let you all know that Superintendent Downing is on a flight back from Boulder, Colorado, where his daughter graduated from college this past couple of days. So he sends his thank you and his appreciation and gratitude for the citizens of Stowe and their support of the school district. We'd also like to thank town administrator, select board, capital planning group, and obviously the FinCom, as well as the moderators for this, for our work that culminates today and will continue. So in the big picture, it's been a challenging budget season for the school district, as it has for many municipalities and school districts across the Commonwealth. On the next slide, oh, I have the clicker. Thank you, Denise. So we are presenting an operating budget outside of the debt, but an operating budget that is still essentially three and a half million dollars over the FY 24, excuse me, FY 25 operating budget. And the reason for this is in a few major areas. The first one being approximately one and a half million dollars in obligations for special education costs. For those who've been following the ball a few years ago, the state increased rates for out-of-district placements at fourteen percent. We're still feeling the increased sort of effect of that, as well as on transportation costs for those students. These are legally obligated costs, and this is our social contract to provide a free and appropriate public education for each and every student in this school district. And, you know, there's no exceptions here. We do our very best for each and every, and sometimes there's more of a cost associated with those. There's a significant debate and discussion and legislative pressure right now to help districts with these cost increases, but for now, this is the reality that we live in, and we're happy and proud to support and provide for these students, but there's a cost associated with it. Also, and the FinCom Chair explained that as well, we have increasing health costs for insurance. So our premiums have increased. I maxed our estimate at the highest possible range that we've seen within the insurance trust over the last several years, and it came in significantly over that. We are, again, similar to other municipalities and districts across the Commonwealth, this is what's happening with healthcare costs right now. We have other mandatory costs in the form of our charter school assessment for students that are not within our district or who go out of the district for school choice, as well as our contract for busing. Our busing contract is very good. I'm very happy we did not have to go out for a bid this year, as compared to what's happening with other local districts and what they're receiving back. So what that results in is very little bit of money that we are asking for over our obligated costs for next year. I will say that across the six buildings, the sort of pens and pencils budget, the non-salary budget is only going up seven thousand dollars. We also have deferred other costs, but most notably, we have reduced twenty-two point one-six positions from last year, from this current year to next year. So these are positions that are currently filled and employed within the school district that will not be next year. Over the course of the last five years, if you see the graph, we have reduced our operating budget, full-time equivalent staffing, by about nine percent, while the actual enrollment in the school district has only gone down about three or four percent. One thing of note, as grants and other things may become available, we'll do our very best to bring our priorities back in if that's an option. But again, we know that we are a culmination of three towns, and other towns have faced different fiscal pressures year to year, and this is part of the shared sacrifice that the school district does to meet the fiscal needs of towns and be collaborative while also still maintaining an excellent education for each and every one of these students in the school district. These decisions were not made in a vacuum. They were made over the course of several sort of long and arduous meetings with administration about what's very best for our students relative to the strategic plan that we have set forth. So this is the overall budget. I'm just going to do a quick pass of it, but you can see that from an operating lens, we've only gone up five and a quarter percent. Obviously, our debt is increasing due to the high school bonding, which results in an overall budget of just over seventy-six million. Here's a breakdown of our debt. Just a quick note on the debt on the high school construction, we are staging this in. We did a bond advisory group a few summers ago as this project was coming into view. We're maintaining our strategy with that, and we are partway through our total bonding. And as we continue to look forward next year, what our cash flow needs will be in the future to finish that off. I encourage you, if you have not driven by the high school recently, there's a significant amount of structural steel up, and you can really see the building coming to full view. And lastly, and why you're here this morning, so here's the Stowe assessment from the school district. Obviously, the operating assessment is only up two point six one percent, and that has to do with the calculation based on the regional agreement. So currently, our operating budget for Stowe is only going up incrementally, whereas obviously the debt assessment is increasing significantly because we are onboarding that debt. And as that continues, it will plateau, and will be in our series of just annual payments over the course of those bonds. So as it's reflected in your warrant, the overall assessment for the town of Stowe is here, and we encourage you to continue to look at the high school construction, and that culminates my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulcarren. Okay, and next up, we have Nikki Andrade from the Minuteman Regional Vocational High School.
Good morning, all. Unfortunately, our superintendent, our new superintendent, Heidi Driscoll, is unable to attend today. She is off teaching a new group of teachers and paraprofessionals. So I'm happy to be here this morning to present the budget. Before we get into the numbers, we really like to just remind everyone that our budget reflects our priorities and our values, our teachers and our students, and we like to show some pictures just to get everyone excited before we get into the budget. So our total budget, just shy of thirty-two and a half million, it's up two point nine nine percent over fiscal year 25. Our operating recommendation is up about five and a half percent, and we'll give you some reasons for that. Our operating capital recommendation is down over twenty-one percent. This is due to an old energy savings lease on our old school building, which is now finally paid off, and our building project debt has remained stable, just under a one percent decrease now that we have finally closed out our MSBA project in August, and we'll just have our debt service payments going forward. Overall, our total member assessments, up one point six eight percent, and for Stowe, it's approximately two point eight million, which is one point two two percent increase from FY 25. This is the breakout for Stowe, but in total of the two point eight, we do have the building project debt, five hundred thirty-seven, which is excluded, which would bring the total amount to two million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Some of the reasons for our operating budget going up, our staff for the collective bargaining agreement, the three percent. We really took a look at supplies and materials to make sure our students continue in their vocational learning, their hands-on learning, as we've all experienced significant inflation for materials such as metals, wood. Our insurances, in particular, building insurance, has increased, and we have a new transportation bid for FY 26, which was about five percent. We also have been looking at our OPEB and a plan to strategically fund this. So in 2021, we put together an OPEB study committee group, and they determined FY 26 was the best time to increase our contribution. We have approximately twenty-two million dollar liability, and we're funded just about one point seven million. So we're at about an eight percent funding of that, so we'd really like to fund that properly to ensure that we can get that funded in the future. As I've mentioned, our energy savings lease has fallen off the books, but we do have some other capital needs around the school and a capital stabilization fund that we are contributing to. And we also rent out our beautiful new facility and our athletic fields, which helps pay for the debt service on that athletic field to the tune of a hundred and fifteen thousand. So our enrollment is a big factor for our budget. Overall, we have six hundred and sixty-nine students, a majority of our students are member town students, six hundred and thirty-two, and thirty-seven out of district are non-member town students. Breaking it out a little bit further, we have Stowe that has sixty-seven students. We have, as far as seniors, nineteen, juniors, fifteen, sophomores, twenty-one, and freshmen, twelve. We have a slot allocation for Stowe of nineteen students. We had eighteen apply this year, ten have accepted, and eight have declined. So we will see an expected decrease in student enrollment for next year's budget. So just a little bit further, again, this is the breakout for Stowe. Our member town assessments for Stowe are going up one point two two percent despite the four-year rolling average for Stowe increasing ten point one percent. And here are some animations from some of the junior students that are from Stowe that are at our school that puts together something for the winter wonderland. So we just wanted to show all the wonderful things our students are doing in the design and visual communications. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Andrade. Okay, so that concludes the presentation portion of this article. So now we'll proceed to the budget line items, and the way we manage this is I will go through the warrant pages, page by page, and ask for any holds on any specific line items. You don't need to come to the microphone, just speak up loudly, say hold, and which number item you would like to have held. Once we could proceed through all the pages, we'll go back and review each item that was asked to be put on hold. Okay, so we'll get started here. So line items one through nine. What number, please? Holds on five and seven. Okay, items ten through eighteen. What number? Okay, thank you. Line number nineteen through twenty-seven. What number? Thank you. Numbers twenty-eight through thirty-five. Yep. Okay, numbers thirty-six through forty-two. None. Numbers forty-three through fifty-one. None. Fifty-two through sixty, fifty-two through sixty-two. What number? Numbers sixty-three through sixty-nine. What number? I'm sorry, say it a little louder. Sixty-four. And numbers seventy through seventy-five. None. And numbers seventy-six through eighty-two. What number? Thank you. Okay, so that concludes the page review, and now I would like to open the floor to discussion on line item number five. If you'll approach the mic, state your name and your street, and proceed with your question directed to me, please.
Debbie Woods, Great Road. Thank you, Madam Moderator. For line item five, town administrator salary is a published number of one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The wages this person holding the position of town administrator will, is expected to receive during fiscal year 26.
Madam Administrator, can you address that? Or Mr. Tool?
That figure is because it's under contract and has been. The contract will be reviewed upcoming next year.
So is that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions on line five? Proceeding to line seven.
Tom Ryan, 453 Great Roads, Stowe. Madam Moderator, I'd like to amend line seven to zero dollars.
Okay, we have an amendment on the floor. Do you have a, thank you, if you could bring that up? So this will stop the process for reviewing the line items, and we will take a motion on the suggested amendment, which reads, "To change the appropriation for line item number seven to zero dollars." Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion on the item?
Madam Moderator, my understanding is this line item currently is, has been vacant since August. It originally was funded with ARPA funds a number of years ago, and I think it's time to maybe pull back on, on some of these items that were funded by ARPA. Now we're being asked to fund them. However, given that it's been vacant since August, I suspect it's not that critical a position. The function that this, the grants administrator handles used to be handled by department heads in conjunction with the town administrator, I don't see any reason why it can't go back to that.
Thank you. Would the town administrator like to respond?
Thank you. So I would argue that the position is needed. It has been vacant from, since August, but we have had difficulty filling it with someone who is experienced. There are a number of department heads here today that can tell you how much of an impact this position has made. This is not the first year, it appears, in your warrant. It was initially brought in through ARPA funds and helped us handle the ARPA funds and grants. The goal would be that we do hire somebody, but if we don't, the funding would go into free cash next year, so I would ask that you keep the position available in case we are able to fill it, as we do deem it necessary.
Okay, we have another question?
Just Canterbury Road. As someone who works with nonprofits and grants writers are very hard to find, have we considered just contracting this as opposed to a full-time person? I understood the... I understood the person. We did have, had to spend a lot of time learning municipal budgeting, so it seems like we should be just looking for contractors who know the system and we don't have to spend time training them.
Would the Town Administrator like to respond?
Yes. I think if we were focused only on a grant person, that would be definitely the way to go, but the majority of the position is procurement-based. And I think I've alluded in the past at these town meetings that our procurement was not being followed in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30B prior to us formalizing the process. While department heads did their best to follow the law, there were steps missing, and we were not following what we needed to do. So again, I would encourage this position to stay. If we do not fill it, the money will just fall to free cash. If we are able to fill it, it will alleviate the burden of the department heads for having to muddle through the procurement law.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend line item number 7 to $0. I think we'll use the clickers for this. And we are... Okay, we're all set to vote. We'll give you 20 seconds on this one, please. Yes means that you would be changing line item 7 to $0. Another couple of seconds, please. Okay, and with a vote of 109 against and 35 in favor, the amendment fails. We'll proceed to continued discussion on the line items. Next is line item 16.
Debbie Woods, Great Road. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Principal Assessors and Wages, again, oops, is the published number of 102,482, the wages this person holding this position should expect to earn in fiscal year '26.
Madam Administrator?
Leonard Goldner from the Stowe Board of Assessors. My understanding, at least from the person who works in the assessors, is that she's actually not receiving the line item of $101,000 in salary. So I mean, this is what I've understood. And my understanding is, when you have this line item, it means not to exceed. So if it says 101, for example, it means it's not to exceed the 101, but it could be less. So that's at least the way it's explained to me by, you know, the people on the, that work on the Board of Assessors.
Would the Town Administrator like to respond?
Certainly. So in Article 3, you all voted the wage and salary schedule that has the hourly rate. So all those positions are based on, when we calculate the annual salary, it is based on the number of physical hours each employee works in a fiscal year. So that is the calculation. May it be 102,400 versus 482, possibly? It just depends on the way the fiscal year falls. We do a calculation of the number of hours and their rate to get their annual salary. Their line items also include things like longevity or other benefits.
Okay. So I just want to point out, so that number is certainly not going to exceed that number. It may or may not be less than that number. And I would just add one more thing.
Could you just have your follow-up question?
Oh, I don't have a follow-up question, it's just a comment. The people that work at the assessors do an excellent job. It's not the most popular job in the world, because when they get requests for abatements, it's not exactly, it's not exactly the easiest task, and I think they do an excellent job.
Thank you, Mr. Goldner. Any other discussion on line 16?
Hi, Ben Beckfold, 104 Taylor Road. I just have a clarification question, because the question over there was, is that going to be that person's salary for the year? And then he said, could the salary be less? And he said, yes. So those two things seem to be, maybe I heard wrong, but those things not to be like...
Ms. D'Kosky?
Line it up.
So for every salary line, it's based on the physical number of hours. So that is what we expect it to be. Could it be a little bit less, depending on the fiscal year and the way they work? Possibly. The salary lines also include things like longevity. So that's what we expect the salary to be. That's what we're basing it on, based on the calculations.
Right. I got that part. But she said, is that going to be their salary? And you said, yes, that is their salary. So it may be less, but it isn't. Right? I just, it seems like those two minutes are still in line.
Okay, you've had your follow-up question, thank you. Are you waiting for the next line items? Okay. All right, so that concludes discussion of line item 16. We're moving on to line item 24.
Debbie Woods, Great Road. Thank you, Madam Moderator. For line item 24, is the published sum of $103,800 the wages the person holding the position of the town clerk should expect to receive in fiscal year '26?
Madam Town Administrator?
Technically, she should expect to receive 102,207.60. We rounded up for the sake of being a round number.
So she will not be receiving the 103,008?
Any other questions on line 24?
Ellen Sturgis, Canterbury Road. I just, as a finance person, I want to clarify, this is an accounting question, so everybody, when you get a salary, it's essentially based, if you're a full-time person, it's 40 hours you have, based on a certain hourly rate. So the numbers that we're seeing in the warrant, yes, maybe it wasn't clear what Denise said, but it's basically, you know, if three days show up in the next fiscal year, it becomes a smaller number. But their salary is based on a rate. So I think that this is a reasonable number. There are always going to be small variations, and I don't think we should be concerned about what amounts to maybe hundreds of dollars, probably less.
Thank you. Any other comments on line 24? Moving on to line 28.
Debbie Woods, Great Road. Thank you, Madam Moderator. While I appreciate the comment, I understand all that, having been in business for many years, but sometimes it's not dollars, sometimes, or not dollars, sometimes it's tens of thousands or five thousands. So anyway, for line item 26, Conservation Director, the sum of 102,558, is that the amount that the position, the person holding that position should expect to earn in fiscal year 2026?
Just to clarify, you said 26, but you mean 28?
I'm sorry, I meant 28. Thank you. Yep.
Madam Administrator?
If the Conservation Director continues to work at a full-time 37.5 hours, then yes, there is some talk of those hours changing.
Thank you, but my understanding is the Conservation Director is currently at four days a week.
Through the end of this fiscal year.
So again, this is for fiscal year '26. Is the amount of 102,558 what she, what that position is expected to earn?
If she works 37.5 hours a week for fiscal '26, that's what she will earn.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on line 28? We'll move to line 31.
Debbie Woods, Great Road. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Rather than going tit-for-tat, I'll make this my last one, but again, I'm, it's showing a, I'll make this my last one. For Town Planner, is the sum of 102,182 what the Town Planner should expect to earn in fiscal year '26?
Thank you. Anything else on line 31? Okay, moving on to line 55. Any discussion on the hold on line 55? Seeing none, we'll move on to the hold on line 63. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to line 64.
Jeff Needle, Shore Ave. Just a quick question. This is a significantly higher number than FY '25, and I suspect I know why. It's also a little bit lower than why, than the request, so I just was looking for clarification.
Madam Town Administrator?
Certainly. So obviously, in fiscal '26, we expect the Randall Library to reopen. As part of the renovations, we are restoring the historic entrance on the main floor. That would require a checkout desk both on the main level and the lower level. So this request adds two part-time aides to supplement the current staff. The reason it's less than what was originally requested is when I sat down with the library director, we went through and actually calculated 26 hours of the current staff, 26 weeks of the current staff, 26 weeks at the new staff, expecting about a January 1 change in staffing levels.
Excellent, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on line 64? Okay, moving on to line 66. Seeing none, we will move on to line 82.
Tom Ryan, 453 Great Road. Madam Moderator, I'm basically looking for a little clarification on the debt service, because the FY 2025 was 2.156 million. The 2026 budget request was 2,186, 2,186, but the recommended number is 2,552, so it's 300,000, 400,000 higher than the requested amount. And I'm wondering what is making up for that. I suspect after seeing the FinCom's presentation, I may know the answer, but I'd just like clarification on that, because it's an 18 percent increase.
So just to clarify, your question isn't specifically about line 82. Your question is about the total on debt service?
Well, I... 81, 82 total, I'm sorry. You know, it's, there's no total debt service line listed in the warrant, so I just picked 82.
Madam Administrator, would you like to address this?
Sure. So yes, as the Finance Committee indicated, it is the temporary borrowing for the funds for the library and the fire truck. The reason it's different than requested is when the budgets were finalized or requested in January, we did not have those estimates, as we actually just went to market last week. So we had some estimates in March as to what we should expect to pay on those temporary notes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that line? Okay, seeing none, we will move back to the motion on the floor noting that the amendment that was proposed for line 7 did not pass, so we are voting on the budget as moved. We'll use the clickers. We will allow a 30-second voting period. It looks like we don't need the 30 seconds. Anybody else still going to vote? Okay, with a vote of 152 in favor and 11 against, Article Number 4 passes. And with that, I'm going to return the microphone to Moderator Jim Salvi.
Thank you, Lisa. And that brings us to the Consent Calendar. Articles 5 through 35. The Consent Calendar is a group of articles that experience has shown shouldn't be controversial and can be dealt with effectively through one consolidated motion without debate. But any resident has a right to debate a Consent Calendar article if they want, so here's what we're going to do. After the consolidated motion is made, I'll read each article number and title, and wait a second. If you want to debate that article, please shout "hold" in a clear and loud voice, much as occurred during the budget discussion. If I hear a "hold," I will ask that person whether it's a quick question or a subject for discussion. A quick question is usually something factual, like a date or a number, that can be dealt with kind of quickly. A question like, "Why do we do this?" or "What is this for?" is certainly a very legitimate question, but is more like a subject for discussion, because it might open things up. So please err on the side of saying "discussion" if you're not sure. Anything that is held will be dropped from the consolidated motion and debated and voted individually in the usual way. And with that, I am ready for the consolidated motion, Mr. Tool.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the annual town meeting approve Articles 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35. Glad you went to school to learn counting. As printed in the warrant, without debate on any such articles, and provided that upon the request of any voter at this meeting made before the vote is taken on this motion, an article shall be dropped from the consent calendar and shall be acted upon in the ordinary course and order of business at this town meeting.
Do I have a second? I have a motion made and seconded on the consent calendar. Your Finance Committee recommendations are in the warrant. I believe they recommend favorably on all the consent calendar items. And now we'll proceed to reading each article number and title, and you tell me whether you want to hold anything. Article 5, Revolving Fund Expenditure Limits. Article 6, Stowe Cultural Council. Article 7, Smart 9/11 Rave Notification System. Article 8, Waits and Measures Testing. Article 9, Transfer to Conservation Fund. Article 10, Transfer From Wetlands Protection Fund. Article 11, Addition to Conservation Fund. Article 12, Assabet River Water Chestnut Control. Article 13, Update of Property Evaluations. And is that a quick question or a subject for discussion? Thank you. Article 14, DPW Road Machinery. Is that a quick question or a discussion? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Quick? Let's try it. You can ask it now.
Mr. Moderator, this applies to both Article 14 and 28, so you could probably answer both now. Every other article has the expenditure written out in words, except for 14 and 28, where it's a table below. I have found in the past that having both the words and the numbers is a check, because sometimes they have not agreed, and we've revised the article. Is it necessary to have the words here? Excuse me. Shouldn't we have the words here, so that we have that check? So for example, 14 begins with "the sums of money." Every other article says "the sum of $4,000," or whatever.
I think I get it. I'll have the Town Administrator respond if she cares to.
While there is no legal requirement to do so, we can certainly put in the verbiage in the future if that is helpful.
Does council agree there's no legal requirement to do so?
Agreed, no legal.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Well, is there any further reason to hold Article 14? It was Article 14 you held, right? All right, I am not holding Article 14 then. Okay. Article 15, DPW Engineering Fees. Article 16, Household Hazardous Waste Collection. Article 17, Municipal Solid Waste Disposal. Article 18, Stowe TV Expenses. Article 18, Stow TV expenses. Article 19, holiday decorations and lighting fund. Article 20, audit of financial records. Article 21, water system expense. Article 22, Select Board's small purchase fund. Article 23, construction and maintenance of water holes for firefighting operations. Article 24, replacement of personal protective equipment for structural firefighting. Article 25, Lake Boone water quality remediation. Article 26, Planning Board Engineering Consulting Expenses. Article 27, Community Preservation Expenses. Article 28, Community Preservation Expenses. We had a question, but I think it's been dealt with. Is there any additional reason to hold it? Article 29, online budgeting software. Article 30, traffic safety advisory funds. Article 31, MS4 stormwater permit requirement. Article 32, legal services. Article 33, transfer to OPEB trust fund. Article 34, transfer to stabilization fund. I think I heard a "hold" on 34. Is that a quick discussion or is that a quick question or a discussion?
Perhaps a quick question?
Quick question? Let's try it.
Just the intent in which circumstance in which the stabilization fund might be used in these cases? Just an example of how would one use the stabilization fund as opposed to putting money into the stabilization fund? How? Under what circumstances would you take it out?
Got it. Ms. Demkosky?
So, the stabilization fund is normally considered the rainy day account. It's when things become a catastrophic level. I'll point to our counterparts in Bolton. They have used the stabilization fund to offset their budget the last few years to push off an override as long as necessary. Several years ago, the stabilization fund was used to make the repairs in Lower Village. So, it's really a matter of conversation between myself, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, if there's projects that we deem should come out of the stabilization fund. If not, it would be used for a rainy day and should we have some sort of emergency situation.
Thank you.
Is there any additional reason to hold Article 34? I am not holding Article 34. Article 35, transfer to capital stabilization fund. As a result of this, the only article I have that I am holding is Article 13. Are there any additional articles that anyone forgot to ask for a "hold" on? Seeing none, we'll go directly to a vote on the consolidated motion. There's no debate on this. That's kind of the point. We will use our cards. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the consolidated consent counter motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. And all those against? Thank you. The consolidated motion passes. We'll now go back, circle back to Article 13. Can I get a motion, Mr. Tool?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 13 and is funding therefore to raise and appropriate the sum of $39,900 to be added to any balance remaining from previous appropriations for the purpose of updating property valuations in the town to full and fair cash value to be expended by the assessors.
Do I have a second? I have a motion made and seconded on Article 13. I'd like to start debate with whoever it was who held it, and that's this lady over here. I call that side microphone. I call this one the front microphone. So, side microphone.
Elizabeth Michaud, 570 Great Road. I understand that much of the increase in our taxes for FY 25 is due not only to a combination of the, all the effects of inflation, but also the bonds for education that we are in the process of adding to our tax rate. My question is motivated by the fact that our personal taxes at 570 Great Road, we own an antique. It's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, so in capacity, it's not that different from a lot of houses in Stow. However, our taxes went up from approximately $12,500 in FY 24 to $17,500 in FY 25, which is over a 40% increase. And that was a shocker. And my question is, apparently it was because several antiques sold for very high values and based on those two or three sales, all antiques were assessed at a much higher value for FY 25, and therefore, our taxes went up approximately 40%. So, my question is, is Article 13 going to result in the tax burden more evenly distributed across all the homes in town? Or should we, in particular, in our antique home, expect another 40% increase next year?
I will let Ms. Demkosky respond to that.
So, I cannot speak to the value of antique homes. I can speak to Article 13, so this is paying the consultant to do the appraisal, list and value for every property. 2026 is a recertification year for Stow, so all properties have to be revalued. To just comment on the primary increase, so yes, as was alluded to earlier, the first $30 million of the high school project hit everyone's taxes on January 1st. That was the significant increase. I see, Mr. Moderator, I see a member of the Board of Assessors is at the microphone. I don't know if he can speak to the antique home question?
Mr. Golda, would you like to? So, I want to say this, first of all. I view the question as barely within the orbit of relevance. The article itself is providing funds to do the assessments, and you're asking more about how the assessments are done. I'm not... They're related, but I'm not so sure it's really within scope. To the extent that your question encompasses an individual question about your particular circumstances, Town Meeting Floor isn't the place to talk about it.
Understood.
But I'm sure the Assessor's Office would have, would be happy to address it. I did say, though, barely within relevance, so I will go to Mr. Golda to see what he can add.
Okay. So, I'll try to answer this barely within relevance.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, as the Town Administrator noted, this is going to be a reevaluation year. So, we'll be doing the whole town in terms of a reevaluation, so that should give us a broader perspective of all the houses. And I think that's, that's a good thing for everybody so that we get a full picture. As far as, as you noted, antiques went up particularly in that particular year, and we have to base these assessments on sales. But these sales vary from year to year. In the time that I've been on the Board of Assessors, there've been some years when antiques didn't sell very well and some other style of house, like ranch houses, for example, in a given year went up, and so those assessments went up. So, in terms of style of homes, it does vary from year to year based on the home sales.
That makes sense. May I have a small follow-up comment?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think that we've spent enough time on what is largely an individual situation. Thank you for your comprehensive answer, Mr. Golda. I'd like to move on.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, just one thing. If she'd like to discuss this with me privately, that would be perfectly okay.
Yes, or with the assessor.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. That, so we need a vote on Article 13. Is there any further discussion on Article 13? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. We'll just use our cards. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And those against? Article 13 passes. So, that disposes of the consent calendar portion of the warrant and brings us to the capital requests of Articles 36 and 37. So, in past years, the capital requests are divided into two articles. Those proposed to be paid out of free cash are in Article 36, and there's, I believe, 16 of them. And the one item that is proposed to be paid for out of borrowing, that is in Article 37. The one that is proposed to be borrowed does not include a debt exclusion. We first have a procedural motion with regard to Article 36. I believe Ms. Hegeman is going to make that motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town discuss the items of this article individually and vote upon each separately as to the amount to be appropriated for each item as set forth in separate motions proposed.
I have a motion made and seconded on the procedure for Article 36. This simply allows us to debate and vote on each item in Article 36 separately. Is there any debate on the procedural motion? Seeing none, we'll go directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. We'll use our cards. And all those in favor, please signify by holding up your cards. Thank you. And those opposed? And the procedural motion passes. It passes. That brings us to a presentation from the Chair of Capital Planning, Mr. Jelinek.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't know why I didn't get somebody else to do my presentation like FinCom did, but that's okay. I'm Steve Jelinek, Chair of Capital Planning. I'm here to present a short overview of the capital items that are in your warrant this year. Just to remind everybody that a capital item is anything, is defined by our bylaws, as any land purchase or a tangible item that costs $10,000 or more with a useful life of at least three years. Capital planning is charged by our bylaws with developing a five-year capital plan for the town and to make recommendations to the town meeting about capital items. There's actually 17 items in the warrant this year, Mr. Moderator. You'll be hearing about members of our committee from each one of these as they come up for a vote. Lastly, this slide lists the members of our capital planning committee, and I'd like to acknowledge them and to thank them for their efforts in what has been a very challenging budget season. This slide summarizes the capital requests that are in your warrant today. It also compares those requests to two other sets of figures. The first is what each department had in their five-year plan that they presented to us last year at this time. And second, how today's warrant articles compare to what each department originally requested back in January. As is typical, there is a difference between what is currently being requested and what was projected a year ago. Everybody knows that departments' plans, they change from year to year. And there is a lot of numbers on this particular slide, but I would like to make you aware of two takeaways. First of all, the capital items that are in the warrant are nearly $1 million more than what was presented at last year's capital planning or capital town meeting. This is not good news. Second, which is somewhat better news, we are about $834,000 less than what was requested back in January. I'll have more to say about this difference on the next slide. And lastly, our recommendations are shown here in the last column. So, those of you who've never had the pleasure of attending a capital planning meeting, I'm giving you a little peek behind the curtain here. This slide shows you what became of those original requests that the departments made back in January. As we showed you on the last slide, the initial requests were a little bit over $6 million. And we met with all the departments, and after we finished meeting with all of them, a little bit over $2 million has been deferred for further study, delayed or otherwise reconsidered. Those are the green numbers on this particular slide, so in this case, green stands for good. The biggest chunk of this is the million one. The Fire Department deferred until FY 28 to replace its main pumper truck. Other departments have reduced the size of their requests by getting second estimates or otherwise sharpening their pencils, and I'm sure you're all grateful to them for that. However, a total of 1.2 million was eventually added to the request list. These are the red numbers, so red is not so good. The latest addition to this, the largest addition to this request, of course, is the dam repair project, and as you hear later, that's because the final cost estimate for the project that came in in March was $1 million more than the estimate that we got in December. This slide shows our five-year capital outlay expectation. The column on FY 26 is the items in your warrant under Articles 36 and 37. The next four columns are what the departments have told us that they expect to request in the next four years. And I'll present my usual caveat here that the requests shown for FY 27 through FY 30 are no like, very, very likely going to change. And I will give you some more details about the future on the next slide. But the bottom line here is, we expect things to be capital, the capital picture to be not so great over the next few years. There's a few large projects that I'll tell you about. The takeaway is, if you add up the bottom line on this slide, we're looking at over $21 million in capital requests either this year or the next four years combined. So, here are some of those big-ticket items that I mentioned. The two biggest are bridge projects. We got engineering funds in this year's warrant article for redoing part of the bridge that carries the Sudbury Road over the Assabet River. The construction cost estimate we have for that right now is over, is nearly $4 million. Also, there's a culvert or a bridge that takes Wheeler Road over Elizabeth Brook. We're just starting to understand what that's going to cost, but it looks like it could be another $3 million. Also on this list, the Fire Department has a couple of engines that they want to replace. That's another $2 million. The School District has talked about replacing the boilers up at Hale School. The Police Department plans to expand into the second floor of the station. The Public Works Department wants to study alternatives to expend the Highway Barn. The Facilities Department is looking to add a new generator at the town building to provide electricity to the town building during power out. Because obviously, we're going to be studying all these things as they come up, and you'll have an opportunity to vote on them in the future. And lastly, I'll give you my usual one-page snapshot here of the capital requests that affect the tax levy. This is past, present, and future, all on the same slide. This year, I've decided to give you a 10-year look back for some historical context. So, I think this paints a picture of what you should keep in mind as you consider this year's capital request. The red bar, that's this year's warrant articles, which total 1.79 million. That doesn't include the 3.4 million that we're talking about in Article 37 that we're going to borrow. The green bars are what we've actually authorized to be spent at the last 10 town meetings. These are items that were directly paid out of the tax levy. It doesn't include about, I think it was $600,000 that we spent out of the ARPA funds, something like that. And I thought that this 1.9 million that we spent in FY 20 was a one-time thing, and it does sort of stand out like a sore thumb. But if you look forward to the blue bars, maybe not. And those are those big-ticket items that I talked about a few minutes ago. So, in the future, we're looking at annual average requests of about $2.1 million a year compared to an annual 10-year look, 10-year average in the past 10 years of $787,000. And just in this year alone, we're $1 million more than we've averaged over the last, the last 10 years. And notice, I talked about this from the tax levy perspective. This doesn't include things that we're likely to borrow money for. Denise and I haven't talked about this at all, but I would expect that we would borrow money for the bridge projects. I expect we'd probably borrow money for the police station expansion. We would certainly borrow money to replace the fire trucks. So, anyway, this is the picture over, historically, and over the next few years. I'm sorry that it's not a very pretty one. The last thing I'll say, though, is that this picture was drawn before the impact of any higher inflation or tariffs were taken into account. So, Mr. Moderator, I'll end on a bad note there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jelinek. And Ms. Birch-McMichael, I'm ready for a motion on Article 36-1.
Okay, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $68,500 for Article 36-1 as printed in the warrant for Flag Hill Garage repairs and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article 36-1. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant and capital planning recommendation here at town meeting. Mr. Jelinek?
Moderator, capital planning voted 4 to 1 to recommend the town support this funding request. The money would be used to re-roof, replace the garage door, and make other structural repairs to the garage on West Acton Road adjacent to the Flag Hill Conservation Area. Conservation Commission told us that they intend to use this building to store materials and equipment needed to maintain the trails on the various conservation
to store materials and equipment needed to maintain the trails on the various conservation parcels in town. Given the deluge of capital funding requests that we received in FY26, some on the committee questioned whether this expenditure really needs to happen in the coming year. Nonetheless, since repairs to the garage are needed for it to be a usable structure, we ultimately concluded that delaying the repairs might be penny wise but pound foolish, given the ongoing increases in the cost of construction materials and labor.
Thank you, Mr. Jelinek. Is there any discussion on Article 36-1?
Ellen Sturges, Canterbury Road. So first, I'm going to channel Daisy Dearborn. What do we need versus what do we want? There's a, as Mr. Jelinek has just presented, there's a lot of requests this year. This is on top of the school project, which is putting us all in a lot of stress around the, the building costs. I feel like that there, of this list, there's things that are very clearly needed. We need to do the, move forward on the dam. We need to move forward on the bridges, the ADA walkway. I'm unclear where a lot of these things, and particularly the Flag Hill Garage, is something we really have to do. All the costs are going to go up this year if the tariffs go through. I think the other thing that I observed when I was still on the select board was every department seems to want their own special space to store their materials. And I'm still confused what we're doing with the old fire station. It seems like we could be more efficient in storing things in one location. If there's big equipment, that's a big issue, but I understand Conservation doesn't have big equipment, and I think that this is something we should postpone.
Thank you. Ms. Timkoski, would you care to respond at this time?
Sure. So the Flag Hill Garage currently houses some small equipment. Our land steward, though, provides much of his own equipment at his own cost. We are expecting him to retire in the upcoming future, and we want to make plans to be able to have a place to store our own equipment for conservation purposes. This, while I understand it might not be necessary for some, the $68,500, it does come from free cash, so it's not necessarily impacting the tax levy. And it's minor repairs, painting, electricity, what we deem as necessary work to continue to maintain that building.
Thank you. Front microphone.
I meant front microphone, Ingeborg.
Hello, Ingeborg Hegeman, 26 Carrington Way. And I'll just say, I'm also on the Conservation Commission. That garage is our garage, and demolition by neglect also costs money. And we do have a plan. The commission does use it. It's a valuable structure. We should repair it, or we should look forward to ultimately having to remove it.
Thank you. And now, side microphone.
Tom Ryan, 453 Great Road. Part of this is, it's a general comment on all of the articles that are coming out of free cash. As our town administrator just said, it's not going to directly impact your taxes this year because it's money that you paid in taxes last year, or the year before. It's money that, free cash is not free money. Free cash is money that you've already paid, for the most part, and it gets put back into free cash when it's not spent in the prior year's budget. So spending this money on any of these articles is actually spending money that you've already been taxed on that you could spend on something else. So, you know, it's just a general thing. And some people seem to think, when I've talked to them in the past, that free cash is just free money. So I wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Front microphone.
JT Tool, 34 Pine Point Road. I'm in favor of funding this for a couple of different reasons. One of the residents mentioned about the storage. This actually is a shared storage space, and that has been an agreement between the Department of Public Works as well as Conservation. There is equipment that is shared in that storage space. Also, the garage door has to be opened with two people because a come-along needs to be used, as well as the issue that if it's raining outside, it's actually raining harder inside this building. So that's not a good situation for the structure itself, but also for the equipment that is being stored there from the two different departments. So we sat also on the capital planning and realized that if we did defer this, this is only going to get worse. This building is required to stay with Conservation because when the land in the building was donated, that was the requirement that was put forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Front microphone.
Jackie Goring, Conservation Assistant Director. Mr. Moderator, if I could give some background information about the garage?
Of course.
In 1999, the Conservation Commission acquired Flag Hill Conservation Area, which included the garage located on West Acton Road. At that time, the Conservation had the roof replaced, and the building was painted by volunteers. We are now requesting capital funds for the first time in 25 years for various maintenance projects for the garage, including replacement of the garage door. As Select Board Chairman JT Tool mentioned, it is nearly unusable. An upgraded electric system, exterior painting, repointing of the cinder block structure, and replacement of the roof. We met with the building commissioner and facilities manager to review the proposed projects and budgeting. From there, the building department staff provided cost estimates. After meeting with capital planning, we received additional quotes for the roof replacement. Building department staff also recommended additional non-structural improvements at that time for the garage, which we felt we could defer as they were not necessary at this time. We currently utilize the garage for storage of equipment, tools, and supplies needed for conservation land management. We anticipate an increased need for equipment storage in the future. As Denise Timkoski mentioned, our contractor, land, our contracted land steward currently uses nearly all his own equipment-
Thirty seconds.
-for our conservation land management and stores that equipment off-site. Once he retires, we will need to continue to use the garage for equipment storage. Other departments, including Public Safety, have used the garage for storage of equipment for conservation land management. Our department has not felt, up until now, that repairs were needed for the garage. As we look to the future, we know we need these necessary improvements to make sure the building can safely be accessed and used to store our land management equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a vote. We'll use our clickers. This requires a simple majority. Again, the vote is on the main motion under Article 36-1. Voting will be open for 20 seconds, beginning now. And voting is closed. By a vote of 104 to 14, the motion passes. I'm ready for a motion on Article 36-2. Ms. Freesha.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $200,000 for Article 36-2 as printed in the warrant for engineering for Sudbury Road Bridge repair and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article 36-2. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant, and capital planning has a recommendation. Mr. Arsenal.
Capital planning unanimously voted for this because the situation is that definitely needs something to be done. And until we get this engineering thing, it could be the cost difference of a little over half million for the maintenance that will buy us like 10 years versus $3 million to replace the whole thing, which in this town, bridges are very expensive. But this, we need this to understand where we go from there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenal. Do I have any debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. This also requires a simple majority. I think we'll use our cards on this one. All those in favor of the main motion, Article 36-2, please raise your cards. Thank you. And those against. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. I'm ready for a motion on Article 36-3, Mr. Constanzos.
Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry, Mr., I should be reading the title. I'm going to correct myself now. On Article 36-3, truck lift and all costs incidental and related thereto. Now, Mr. Constanzos.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $70,000 for Article 36-3 as printed in the warrant for a truck lift and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article 36-3. Again, the Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant, and capital planning recommendation will be from Mr. Arsenal.
Capital planning voted unanimously to support this. The current one they have is 21 years old, and it's basically a piece of junk. But, you know, it just, if someone gets hurt lifting a truck, and this one does more than just, it does a lot of things, and it's, 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 it's good to have. You don't want somebody to get hurt and end up paying a lot in medical bills. So that's why we supported it. It's a good thing for the town to have.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenal. I appreciate the, you're dazzling us with the technical term "piece of junk." Is there any debate on Article 36-3? Seeing none, we'll go directly to a vote. Again, this requires a simple majority. The vote is on the main motion under 36-3. You're already anticipating where this goes. You're raising your cards. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And those opposed. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Article 36-4, resurface Treaty Elm Lane and all costs incidental and related thereto. I need a motion, Mr. Tool.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $50,000 for Article 36-4 as printed in the warrant to resurface Treaty Elm Lane and all costs incidental and related thereto.
A motion made and seconded on Article 36-4. Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant, and Mr. Arsenal for the capital planning committee.
Capital planning unanimously supported this because it's, it's part of a program where they can do one, one street in the town per year. This year, it's, happens to be Treaty Elm Lane. So that's why we supported it. Keep one a year, and that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Is there any debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Again, requires a simple majority. We'll use cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And those opposed. 36-4 passes. Article 36-5, DPW generator transfer switch and all costs incidental and related thereto. I need a motion, Ms. Hegeman.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $25,000 for Article 36-5 as printed in the warrant for a DPW generator transfer switch and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded on 36-5. Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant. Mr. Arsenal for the capital planning committee.
Capital planning unanimously accepted this. I'm usually not repetitive, but this one's a piece of junk, too.
And it's, and it's dangerous because it's electrical. So we support this. Thank you. Mr. Arsenal has set the theme for today's meeting, which is "piece of Is there any debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Again, this requires a simple majority. Use our cards. All those in favor, hold up your cards. Thank you. And those opposed. Article 36-5 passes unanimously. Article 36-6, replacement of police station roof and all costs incidental and related thereto. I need a motion, Ms. Birch-McMichael.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $125,000 for Article 36-6 as printed in the warrant for replacement of police station roof and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article 36-6. Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant, and Mr. Arsenal once again for the capital planning committee.
Capital planning unanimously supported this back last year. There was a insurance thing where there was a leak in the roof, and the insurance company paid for it and got it repaired, but they will not. If something else happens, they're not going to pay. So it's up to us to get it fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenal. I'll start debate here at the front microphone.
Hi, Lee Quibberin, 55 Gates Lane. Thank you. There was a mention before about they wanted to put a second floor on the police station in the next few years, so I was curious how putting a new roof on now relates to putting a second floor on in a few years.
Ms. Timkoski.
There already is a second floor. It's attic space that's not completed, so the request in the future years is to build out that second floor.
Excellent. Thank you.
Front microphone.
Hector Constanzos, 34 Meeting House Lane. In the presentation earlier, did I see correctly that initially there was $143,000 more asked for the police station roof? If so, I'd like to know why it was reduced.
Which presentation are you referring to? Oh, Mr. Jelinek?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Timkoski, can you help?
So that is accurate. The capital planning committee asked us to go and revise our quotes and get additional bids before we put this forward to town meeting. So the $125,000 is based on an actual quote. It still does have to go out to bid, but that is based on the most current number that we have.
Just to clarify, that means the town administration is supporting 125, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. This requires a simple majority. We'll use our cards. All those in favor, I'm sorry, we're going to, I'm sorry, we're going to use our clickers on this. Although, I think, I think I kind of saw the result. Let's use our clickers. It's only 20 seconds. Simple majority. I'll And voting is closed. And by a vote of 114 to 8, the motion passes. I should explain the confusion, my confusion about how to vote. When just trying to decide how to vote on clickers versus cards, I try to keep in mind comments I've received from people over the past few years. And one thing I hear is that some people don't like to take public votes against either the schools or the police. So I try to keep that in mind. That's my rationale. Article 36-7, replacement of exterior doors at town building and all costs incidental and related thereto. Ms. Freesha.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $10,000 for Article 36-7 as printed in the warrant for the replacement of exterior doors at town building and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article 36-7. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant, and speaking for the capital planning committee is Mr. DeLuca.
Thank you. So there are three emergency exit doors at the back of the town building that have rot and weather damage and don't open and close well anymore. That is what will be covered by this. Looking forward, there are two French doors on the lower level that may also need replacement in a couple of years. But the replacement of those doors is going to depend on how that space will be utilized in the future. So this is, the article here is for the replacement of the three rear exit doors. And the capital planning committee unanimously supported this article.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Any debate? Seeing none, we'll go directly to a vote. Again, requires a simple majority. Use our cards on this one. And all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those against. And article, the motion on Article 36-7 passes. Article 36-8, rebuild the front walkway at town building and all costs incidental and... Well, I have favorable, favorable thereto. And related thereto, it should be. The Finance Committee's recommendation is in the warrant, and it's favorable. And speaking for the Capital Planning Committee, Mr. DeLuca.
Unanimously to support this article. The existing front walkway does not meet the requirements of 5221C MR for the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board regulations. The proposal is to tear up the older walkway, regrade the site, and build a walk that meets the code requirements. After reviewing the project, it became apparent that in addition to the walkway, the accessible parking area may, will also have to be regraded as part of the project. The project is eligible for reimbursement grant funds from the Massachusetts Office of Disability. The state requires that the money be allocated, and the limit on the grant cannot exceed 250K.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. I got out of the rhythm, and I forgot to get the motion first. Mr. Constanzos.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $275,000 for Article 36-8 as printed in the warrant to rebuild the front walkway at town buildings and all costs incidental and related or favorable thereto.
Thank you. We now have a motion made and seconded on Article 36-8. We have some debate. Front micro... I didn't hear you, Mr. DeLuca.
You don't need me to repeat my comments.
No, I don't. Thank you. Front microphone.
Allison Campbell, 10 Wildwood Road. I have a question, and it's based on the estimate for, for a Treaty Elm road. We can do the whole of Treaty Elm for 50,000, and we're doing a walkway for 275. Can someone expand on that for me?
Ms. Demkosky, do you want to handle that?
Sure. So, this is not just resurfacing the walkway. This is actually digging it out and redoing it entirely. As Capital Planning mentioned, it is not ADA compliant. The slope is not correct. The pitch at the front door of the town building is not correct. Where it ends in the parking lot is not compliant. So, this would actually redo the entire front entranceway of town building. I do want to just add, our goal is to apply for a grant under the ADA accessibility grants, but in order to qualify, we need to show that we have the funds should we not receive the grant. So, we took all the preliminary work to make sure we could apply for the grant, which was getting in a, having an assessment done by the state. They have done that. They have given us a report. This was flagged as a concern from the state. We will apply for the grant, but like I said, we need to show that we have funding available should we not receive it.
Is there a follow-up? Nope? Okay. Side microphone.
Deputy Woods, Great Road. Mr. Moderator, just a, I think the town administrator's comment just clarified it. So, if what I understand from the town administrator's comment and Capital Planning, we're allocating 275, but it is hoped that up to potentially $250,000 for the grant, whatever we receive for the grant will come out of that, or will reduce that and therefore remain in free cash. Is that correct?
Ms. Demkosky.
Yes. Thank you.
Ellen Sturgis, Canterbury Road.
Customer to wait to be recognized, but.
Sorry.
Ms. Sturgis, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I just had a question. Mr. DeLuca mentioned the parking spaces as well, and I didn't know if we needed to clarify that in the motion, that it's not just the walkway.
Ms. Demkosky.
I would consider that costs incidental and related thereto. It's really the handicap spaces where they're currently located, we would have to move because that's where the walkway would terminate. So, it's just reconfiguring the parking lot as well.
Is there any further debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Again, this requires a simple majority. The vote is on the main motion under Article 36-8. We'll use, well, we'll use our clickers. I will keep the voting window open for 20 seconds, beginning, beginning very soon. Beginning now. And voting is closed. By a vote of 140 to 16, the motion passes. Article 36-9, apparatus floor refinishing and all costs incidental and related thereto. Do I have a motion, Mr. Tool?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $97,000 for Article 36-9 as printed in the warrant for apparatus floor refinishing and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article 36-9. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant. And Mr. DeLuca for the Capital Planning Committee.
Capital planning unanimously supported this article. The requested funding is to have the apparatus floor bays refinished. The original construction called for floors to be polished cement, which became very slick when wet. The floor was refinished in 2022 with a coating advertised as providing more traction when wet and durability. Since then, that coating has not performed as advertised and is coming off the floor in large spots and is causing a safety concern. The current flooring estimate is for a flooring that is similar to a floor at the currently, at the Mass Fire Academy. So, we support this article as a safety article.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Is there any debate? Seeing, there is some debate. At the front microphone.
Thank you, Moderator. Chris Crable in 107 Kingland Road. Just for clarification, based on what the Capitol just said, is this for replacing flooring, or is this a refinishing process, and is the amount based on a bid?
Ms. Demkosky.
So, this is a refinishing of the floor, and it is based on estimates that we have. Legally, we cannot go out to bid until we have an appropriation.
But it is based on estimates received. Thank you.
Is there any further debate? Side microphone.
I'm Ellen Anthony from Harvard Road. And what floor is this? Where is it?
Ms. Demkosky.
It is the fire station apparatus where all the fire trucks and fire engines and equipment is stored.
Front microphone.
Pam Weathers, 89 West Acton Road. I have a quick question about if that was a non-performing floor, what are we doing about trying to recoup some of the cost of what we already put into it if it didn't have much of a lifetime? It would be nice to know we have some recourse on that.
Ms. Demkosky.
The warranty on that has expired.
Is there any further debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. We'll use our cards. This is a simple majority. The vote is on the main motion under Article 36-9. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And those against. And the motion passes, though not unanimously. Article 36-10, refurbish forestry, forestry engine 18 and related equipment and all costs related thereto. Do I have a motion, Ms. Hegeman?
Mr. Moderator, I move, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $80,000 for Article 36-10 as printed in the warrant to refurbish forestry engine number 18 and related equipment and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded under Article 36-10. Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant. And Mr. DeLuca for the Capital Planning Committee.
Capital planning unanimously voted in favor of this article. The requested support is for the refurbishment of forestry engine 18. The truck is the fire department's primary response vehicle for outdoor fires. The Ford F-450 chassis was purchased in 2006 and then currently has very low miles and is overall in very good condition. The funding is going to cover the cost of replacing the fire pump tools, equipment, and repairing the wiring and electrical issues that are currently with the truck.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Do we have any debate? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. This requires a simple majority. We'll use our cards. Motion is on the, the vote is on the main motion under 36-10. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And those against. The motion passes unanimously. Article 36-11, Hale School water storage, Hale School water storage tank painting and all costs incidental and related thereto. Do I have a motion, Ms. Birch-McMichael?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $25,000 for Article 36-11 as printed in the warrant for Hale School water storage tank painting and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article 36-11. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is the warrant. And Mr. Jelenik will give us Capital Planning's recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning voted to recommend the town approve funding for the school district's request to pressure wash and repaint the 4,000-gallon steel potable water tank at Hale School. Because the tank is housed within a protective shed and the district's latest inspection report confirms that it remains structurally sound, the vote was not unanimous. And some members of the committee feel that the project should be deferred.
Thank you, Mr. Jelenik. Do I have any debate? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. We'll use our clickers on this one. This is a simple majority, though, and the vote, again, is on the main motion under Article 36-11. Voting will be open for 20 seconds, beginning very soon. Beginning now. And voting is closed. By a vote of 87 to 60, the motion passes. So, based, based on what I'm seeing on how the votes are coming in, please be sure to keep pressing until you see okay. I see votes coming in at the very last second. I'm concerned that some people think they're voting and then realize that they're not. So, just keep pressing until you see that okay. That's what tells you that you voted. Article 36-12, Center School exterior painting and all costs incidental and related thereto. Do I have a motion, Ms. Freesha?
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 36-12, Center School exterior painting.
Do I have a second? I did not hear a second. Second. I have a sec, I have a motion made and seconded for no action on Article 36-12. The Finance Committee has recommended favorably in the warrant. May I assume the, what is the Finance Committee's recommendation on no action? The Finance Committee supports no action. Capital Planning's recommendation, do you have a comment on no action, Mr. Jelenik?
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning supports deferring this project by moving no action on Article 36-12. The project will involve scraping and painting the trim on the original south end of Center School. While the project will need to be done at some point soon, it is not critical that it be done in FY '26. Moreover, the district has not been able to determine the extent to which lead paint residue may still be present in some areas of, to be painted. Accordingly, we have not been assured that the funding amount requested will be sufficient to cover the cost of the project, and we agree that it would be prudent to delay the project.
Thank you, Mr. Jelenik. A motion for no action is debatable. Is there any debate? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. The vote is on the motion for no action. We'll use our cards. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And all those opposed. Town takes no action on Article 36-12. Article 36-13, Hale School auditorium carpeting and all costs incidental and related thereto. Do I have a motion, Mr. Constanzos?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $12,260 for Article 36-13 as printed in the warrant for Hale School auditorium carpeting and all costs incidental and related thereto.
That's the way to do a second. I have a motion made and seconded on Article 36-13. Your Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant, and Mr. Jelenik has Capital Planning's recommendation.
Do I need the mic? Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning voted unanimously to recommend the town support replacing the worn-out carpeting in the Hale School auditorium before the carpeting becomes even more of a dangerous tripping hazard for the students, teachers, and visitors than it is already.
Thank you, Mr. Jelenik. Is there any debate on Article 36-13? We'll go to a vote. This requires a simple majority. We will use our clickers. The vote is on the main motion under Article 36-13. And voting will be open for 20 seconds, beginning shortly. Beginning now. And voting is closed. By a vote of 96 to 14, the motion passes. Article 36-14, security camera server replacement and all costs incidental and related thereto. Do I have a motion, Mr. Tool?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $22,500 for Article 36-14 as printed in the warrant for security camera server replacement and all costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion and a second on Article 36-14. The warrant says the Finance Committee will report its recommendation at town meeting. I've been asked to report that they have recommended favorable action. Do you want to add anything to that, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, please. Dan Peterson, 77 Wheeler, also Finance Committee. Just to clarify, so, we did move forward with favorable action in a 3 to 2 vote. The main contention was over, should the town, should Stowe be in the business of IT, or is that something that we should move more urgently than not to a cloud-based system? That was the main area of debate. Ultimately, it was decided for here and now to maintain favorable action on maintaining the IT system that the school operates as is.
So, that's favorable on the motion?
Correct. I just wanted to clarify that it was, it was a 3 to 2 decision.
Thank you. And Mr. Jelenik with the Capital Planning recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning has had considerable discussion about this funding request, which would be used to replace the existing servers that manage the video feed from the school's security cameras. While in many instances, the latest trend is for video storage to be handled by cloud servers, in this case, the district asserts that continuing to use hardwired servers for the time being is more secure and more reliable than cloud storage because of the way the school's security systems are configured. Moreover, the cost information the district, the district provided to us indicates that at this time, the hardwired configuration would be considerably cheaper than the cloud storage alternative. Accordingly, Capital Planning recommends the town support this funding request.
Thank you, Mr. Jelenik. Is there any debate? Front microphone.
Hi, Kevin Wesley, 51 Orchard Drive. I have a question of clarity. Is this for servers for the schools located within Stowe, or is this a district-wide? And if it is district-wide, what is the cost allocation among the three communities?
I'm going to ask Mr. Molt Karen to address that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the server would be for the security camera footage here and at Hale, so for the Stowe-based schools. The other three towns have similar setups, with the exception of the high school. While it's aging, we're waiting for the new high school to come onboard before replacement.
So, if I understand correctly, this is not a district-wide expense. This is an expense just for Stowe schools?
Correct, and similar across the other three, or other two towns for the amount for each. for each location.
Thank you, Mr. Mulcarren.
Thank you.
Is there any further debate? Front microphone.
Hi, Lori Clark, 39 Bradley Lane. A couple of questions. Buying physical servers means we're going to need to buy them again, so I'm wondering what the life of these servers are expected to be. And was it that the cloud is not possible because of the school configuration, or just curious as to how that decision got made? Was it that it wasn't available, or that it was not chosen for some other reason?
So I'm going to ask Mr. Mulcarren to address that, but I'm wondering if we can wait to hear the next question, and then you can address both. Mr. Mulcarren, is that all right? Front microphone.
Hector Constanzos, 34 Meeting House Lane. The -- if I understood correctly, this covers both Hale and Center School, but it's one server system. Does that mean there's physical wiring going between the schools and wherever the servers are located? So if something happens with the wiring, there's cause to dig it up and replace it instead of using Wi-Fi signals? And if so, isn't that going to be more expensive?
Thank you. Mr. Mulcarren?
The connection between the two schools runs on fiber, so I'm not an IT person. We've had no issues with our fiber locally or across the other three buildings -- or three towns with regards to connectivity or damage. That's always a possibility with anything. I can't prevent or name catastrophic issues that may come up in the future. Again, this is our IT's recommendation about securing this footage versus using the cloud. Also, if all three town systems were on the cloud, it's the cost, but it's also the use of the bandwidth on that fiber, which, you know, may be up for debate, but our network team feels like keeping as much traffic off of that between the buildings is as important for the operations of the school district.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, do you have a follow-up? And remember, there's only one follow-up, so use it wisely.
Well, the answer to how, what is the life of these servers did not get answered.
Thank you.
That omission was incidental. These servers currently have been in place since 2019, so we're expecting a similar lifecycle.
Thank you. Mr. Constanzos, did you have a follow-up? No. Is there any further debate? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a vote. This requires a simple majority. Again, the motion -- the vote is on the main motion under Article thirty-six dash fourteen. We'll use our clickers, and voting will open for twenty seconds, beginning now. And voting is closed, and by a vote of seventy-three to nineteen, the motion passes. Article thirty-six dash fifteen, New Cruiser and Related Equipment. Do I have a motion, Ms. Hegeman?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $83,000 for Article thirty-six dash fifteen as printed in the warrant for a new cruiser and related equipment.
I have a motion and a second on Article thirty-six dash fifteen. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant, and Mr. Jelenic has Capital Planning's recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning Committee unanimously voted to recommend the town support this request for funding to replace the department's 2019 Ford Explorer, which had reached -- has reached the end of its useful life. It wasn't. Sorry, it was not unanimous. Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. What was it? It was four to one. Sorry. Even though the department -- even though the 2019 Ford Explorer is a piece of junk, it is the department's last fully gasoline-powered vehicle, and it will be replaced with an all-electric model, which would become the department's third such vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Jelenic. Is there any debate?
I can't let this opportunity go by.
Side microphone. Traditionally recognized.
All right, Dave Arson. I would -- I would like the police chief to come up here and explain why we're getting away from EVs or anything that has, you know, hybrids, why we're getting away from hybrids altogether, and what's his plan moving forward.
Thank you. By coincidence, the police chief is lurking by the front microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Salisi, Police Chief. That's a great question. And so I know that part of the town -- part of the town's wishes is to go electric. This will be our third purchase of an electric vehicle. This will probably be my last EV as the infrastructure that we have at the police station can only support the three that we have. And going forward, depends on what is available, but I would go back to doing the hybrids. And that's what's going to be offered in the future as well. As far as -- so I would say this is our last all-gas engine, all-gas cruiser, but the vehicle that we're looking at right now is the Blazer. It's a little bit different. It's all-electric, 330 miles per charge. It gets, you know, it can hold all the equipment, and it's purposely made for police purposes, for, you know, mission-critical. And again, I cannot -- unless we get a Level III charger for going forward, I'm going to be probably recommending the hybrids going forward after this. So. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions, any additional debate? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. The vote is on the main motion under Article thirty-six dash fifteen, requires a simple majority, and we'll use our clickers. Voting will be open for twenty seconds, beginning now. And voting is closed. By a vote of one thirty-one to seventeen, the motion passes. Article thirty-six dash thirteen, Lake Boone Dam Replacement and All Costs Incidental and Related There Too. Do I have a motion, Ms. Birch-McMichael?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from certified free cash the sum of $600,000 for Article thirty-six dash sixteen as printed in the warrant for Lake Boone Dam Replacement and All Costs Incidental and Related There Too.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article thirty-six dash thirteen. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action. That's in your warrant, and Mr. Jelenic has Capital Planning's recommendation.
Article thirty-six sixteen, Mr. Moderator.
What did I say? Thirty-six dash sixteen. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, and you might know what I'm going to say here. Right, Dave?
Yes.
As we all know, that in 2017, the town was notified by the State Department of Conservation that the dam holding back Lake Boone is. At last year's town meeting, we authorized funding to develop the repair design. With both that design and the repair construction costs now estimate -- estimate now completed, the time has begun to begin the first construction phase of the repair. Understanding that grant funding has been applied for, which would help defray the construction cost that the dam thing must be repaired. You see where I'm going here. Capital Planning voted unanimously to recommend the town support extending six -- expending $600,000 from free cash towards the project.
Thank you, Mr. Jelenic. A damn joke was expected, and before we begin debate, just let me note, Article thirty-six dash seventeen is obviously very closely related. Comments or questions relating to Article thirty-six dash seventeen will also be within scope on this debate, even though we will have thirty -- thirty-seven dash -- oh, boy. Yes. Comments and questions on Article thirty-seven dash one will be within scope of debate on Article thirty-six dash sixteen, although obviously, we will have separate motions and separate votes. Seeing some debate, front microphone.
Dan Barstow, 99 Pine Point Road, and a member of the Lake Boone Commission. I just want to thank the people who've been involved in this. It's been many years we've been going over this, and I've been very impressed with the depth and sophistication of the analysis and trying to get this into a good solution. I support this.
Thank you. Mr. Collings, if you'd prefer to sit, I can have a microphone brought to you.
Bob Collings, 137 Barton Road. I believe there are very serious concerns, particularly having to do with public safety, that have not been adequately addressed. The response time from Stowe to get to residents on the south of Barton Road, which will be closed off by the dam, are going to be significantly increased. Response time is very critical because a fire doubles every minute, which means after five minutes, it's thirty-two times. Nine minutes, it's 500 times. Response time is critical, also in terms of cardiac arrest, because after four minutes, brain damage occurs, and after seven to 10 minutes, death. So response time is very critical. There are some opportunities for enhancing response time for public service, but they require budget considerations, and they require modifications to the plan. Traffic is going to be another factor, because currently, it's planned that construction vehicles can travel on Barton Road. There's no provision for parking of construction workers' vehicles, and there's no provision for a construction site where you would have typically your porta-potties, your materials, and so forth. Further, there's lacking in the plan, a response that if there's a minor breach in the dam, to have equipment and materials handy to address it before it becomes major.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Thank you. Major would be considered the fact that Lake Boone is 55 million gallons for every one foot, and basically, in the emergency plan in the state, it says basically a breach of the dam would take out the Ben Smith Dam and create a major disaster. All I'm asking is that we defer this until we've had a public hearing and an opportunity for public service and other considerations, which are not now provided and in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Demkowsky, would you like to respond?
I would, thank you. So while I appreciate Mr. Collings' comments, the dam is, as was mentioned, this has been in the works since 2017. It is a critical infrastructure piece. Mr. Collings actually met with the police and fire chief on Thursday to address these concerns. They are things that we have been working on and thinking about. If you'll all recall, last year at town meeting, you appropriated some funds to put forth lease agreements with some neighbors and abutters to the dam, specifically to address the concern of construction vehicles, porta-potties, turnarounds, et cetera. As was pointed out in Mr. Jelenic's earlier presentation, just waiting four months, the cost increased another million dollars. We are seriously concerned with tariffs on this project. The time is now. We want to get this underway. We are still waiting for the state to approve the permits. Once that's done, we want to begin, because any further delays will just continue to increase, and this is not something that we can just put aside and not take care of.
Thank you. Side microphone.
Mark Forgs, White Pond Road in Stowe.
Can you --
Mark Forgs, White Pond Road. Just a curiosity question, why we're not borrowing all the money rather than saying we borrow, you know, take out of free cash that we use for so many good things. Why we wouldn't use that and borrow it all at the same time? Because the next article is going to be 33,400,000, right? Just rounded up to 4 million.
Ms. Demkowsky?
So that is a great question. We had some additional free cash this year, so I wanted to utilize some of it for this. The goal is, with the 3.4 million, as was alluded to, we have applied for another million-dollar dam safety grant. We have 800,000 from the last dam safety grant that will still be applied to this project. And with construction costs fluctuating, we felt that the 3.4 is sort of in question. The 600,000, we know we're going to spend. That's the only reason why one is free cash and one is borrowing.
That's fine. I was just curious, because, you know, free cash is so important to us, and, you know, we're rather hanging on to this for something else.
Thank you. Is there any additional debate on Article thirty-six dash sixteen or thirty-seven dash one? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. The vote is on the main motion under Article thirty-six dash sixteen. Only Article thirty-six dash sixteen, which requires a simple majority. We'll use our clickers, and voting will be open for twenty seconds, beginning now. And voting is closed, and by a vote of one twenty-nine to twelve, the motion passes. That ends our consideration of Article thirty-six. We'll now move to Article thirty-seven dash one. Capital requests borrowing Lake Boone Dam replacement. Ms. Freesha, do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town borrow $3,400,000 for Article thirty-seven as printed in the warrant for the Lake Boone Dam replacement and all costs incidental and related there too, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with approval from the select board is authorized to borrow the full amount of the appropriation under the general laws, Chapter 44, or any other general special or special law or other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
I have a motion made and seconded on Article thirty-seven dash one. I want to ask, can everyone hear the select board's motions as they're being made? Okay. I guess I'm the only one having difficulty. All right, thank you. Your Finance Committee's recommendation, which is favorable, is in the warrant. Mr. Jelenic, you have Capital Planning's recommendation.
Capital Planning voted unanimously to recommend the town support borrowing up to the sum of 3.4 million dollars for the balance of the construction cost to repair the Lake Boone Dam.
Thank you. I did combine debate on this item with the previous article, but just in case, is there anything anyone wanted to add?
Ernie Dodd, 341 Sudbury Road. My major question is, why isn't Hudson footing some of the bill? I realize they don't own the dam, but they definitely -- the dam provides them water for their properties on the basin, too.
Ms. Demkowsky?
I nominate Ernie Dodd to have those conversations with Hudson.
It looks like unanimous, Mr. Dodd. Was that your answer, Ms. Demkowsky? That's -- okay, that's fine.
Ames, wow. Ames Coney, 371 Sudbury Road. I'm sure this was considered in the past, and I'm sure there's an explanation, but why was a lake district not created so that all of the residents who benefit from the lake pay for it, and those of us who do not benefit don't?
Ms. Demkowsky?
Unfortunately, I cannot speak to that. I don't know why one was not created. I would say it's like everything else, that the residents that live in town that have private ways are paying for other roads to be paved. Residents that have other circumstances are paying. It's just the way the taxes in the town works.
Thank you. Is there any further debate on Article thirty-seven dash one? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Oh, I do see something, yes. Side microphone.
Wes Fisher, 200 Barton Road in Stowe. I just want to praise Bruce Fletcher for keeping everybody on the lake informed. Great job.
Thank you, sir. Now I think we're ready to go to a vote. This requires a two-thirds majority because it involves borrowing. The motion -- the vote again is on the main motion under Article thirty-seven dash one. We'll use our clickers. Voting will be open for twenty seconds, beginning now. And voting is closed. By a vote of 137 to 20, the motion passes. Well, you just took care of a very challenging capital agenda. Please give yourselves a hand. Before we proceed to Article 38, I want to ask, I want to ask Community Preservation Committee Chair Maureen Crawford. I believe she has an extremely brief presentation to make. I'll ask her to come. Ms. Crawford.
Mr. Moderator, at the meeting on March 17th, the Community Preservation Committee voted to recommend to town meeting that it pass Articles 27, 28, and 38 as written. The slideshow, the slideshow, the funds is allocated from Articles 27 and 28, and the additional sums for this Article 38 for the library.
Ms. Crawford, if I could just clarify, the balances that are reflected in the lower-left of this slide?
Those are the sums after the Articles 27 and 28 were voted on earlier this, today.
But don't include the upcoming Article 38, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Crawford. We'll go to Article 38. Additional funds for the restoration of the historical Randall Library Building. I need a motion, Mr. Constanzos.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 38, additional funds for the restoration of the historical Randall Library Building, as printed in the warrant and as funding, therefore, appropriate and transfer $930,427 from the Community Preservation Fund comprised of $346,257 from the Community Preservation Fund Reserve for Historic Preservation Account, and $584,170 from the unreserved Community Preservation Fund balance. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act to be expended under the direction of the library director in consultation with the Community Preservation Commission, Committee, to preserve, rehabilitate, and restore the historical portion of the Randall Library and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto.
I have a motion made and seconded under Article 38. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant. Capital Planning has a recommendation. Mr. Jelenek?
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning voted unanimously to recommend the town authorize this expenditure of Community Preservation Act funds to continue the renovation of Randall Library. We view the library as an important historical landmark and an essential community resource, and we consider this expenditure, which will hopefully complete the library renovation as an entirely appropriate use of CPA funds.
Thank you, Mr. Jelenek, and I believe we have a presentation from the library director, Ms. McAndrew.
Hello? There we go. It was on, but needed to be restarted. All right. So I'm Tina McAndrew, I'm the library director here, and I wanted to share the reasons why I'm here again, but requesting approval of the funding that we requested from the Community Preservation Committee. When the 1970s edition was removed in July of 2024, in the months following, additional work was identified to really ensure the integrity of the 1800s building. And as you all know, there have been increases to cost for all of the work related to the library. Since the initial approval, and there's a lot of words here, so I'm going to summarize, but since the initial approval of the taxpayer money at town meeting in 2022, and even since the groundbreaking in 2024, supply chain disruptions, material shortages, price increases, and now tariffs have increased the cost of construction and materials. And I want you all to know that staff have been working diligently with the designers to really value manage the project, and by that I mean reducing as much as we can while still providing the community with a beautiful state-of-the-art library. So more specifically, when the historical building was examined, the slab was deemed unfit to be repaired, and so it needs to be completely replaced. The shoring of the historic building was necessary to make sure that the workers were safe and to, and to complete the support of it while we continued to do the project. When we went into the building, there were beams that we thought were in place, holding up the second floor, that were not there, so they need to be installed, and some of them actually do need to be replaced. So to break down our request of the funding that Maureen just presented, again, there's foundation and structural issues that need to be addressed, and these are the figures that are associated with each one. Our designers worked to illuminate how the cost breakdown is here. So there's initial cost escalation, there's the foundation and structural issues. There was shoring required, and I will be showing you some pictures so you can get a better idea of what I'm talking about. The new slab, as I mentioned earlier, was broken and very uneven. There were missing column footings and beams. There needs to be repointing of the brick and brownstone of the historic building. And again, there were cost delays. And so the total that we requested from the CPC this year is $930,000. Sorry, $930,427. There are some pictures that I can show you. This is the floor of the library. The picture on the left was actually my office. That's the turret of the original 1800s building. And the next picture goes through the lower level, all the way over to where the children's room was on the Crescent Street side of the building. And these are the footings and the beams that I'm talking about that we needed to work The shoring you can see are the bars and the metal footings, or the metal bars that are down, raising vertically and across, and those were put in place while the workers continued work inside. Our design lab, our designers' design lab actually went up in a, I call it a cherry picker, and they examined every brick on this building. And they created this diagram, which has illuminated all the parts of the brick and brownstone that need to be replaced. And this is a more detailed picture of what I'm talking about. You can see that there are pieces that have slubbed off of the brick and the flashing. These are all going to be replaced with the monies funded by the Community Preservation Committee. And we recognize that, over time, the library did fall into disrepair, and our goal is, moving forward, to not have to continually do this every year, and that is why we asked for such a large amount. We want to be able to do it and do it right and have it be done. And just as an ending to this, I just want you all to know, there's been so much work on the, behind the scenes and raising funds that we didn't ask for from the town. We're continually applying for grants. The Revitalize Randall subset of the Friends has raised the money for the furniture and the shelving, which is a huge amount. And so that is our breakdown for what we're requesting this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McAndrew. Do we have debate on Article 38? Seeing none, I guess we're ready for a vote. This requires a simple majority. Again, the vote is on the main motion under Article 38. We will use our clickers for this one, and voting will be open for 20 seconds, beginning now. And voting is closed, and by a vote of 115 to 15, the motion passes. That brings us to Article 39. I'm going to turn the chair over to Ms. Lavina for the next few articles.
Hello again. It's getting to be lunchtime, and I recognize that. We'll try to keep moving quickly. Next up, we have Article 39, Subscription Services. Mr. Tool, do you have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 39, Subscription Services, as printed in the warrant and as funding thereof, raise and appropriate the sum of $28,000 for the purpose of paying for subscription services that were previously paid through COVID funding. Hope that's quick enough.
Do I have a second? Oh, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion or debate? Okay, great. Oh, sorry.
Mark Forges, White Pond Road. What is, what is this subscription service? What is this, what is this actually paying for?
The town administrator.
Time Magazine?
The town administrator can respond.
Thanks.
Sure. So as noted in the note underneath the article, it covers a number of services that we brought in through the CARES Act, specifically the Zoom account that allows all of the boards and committees to continue to meet remotely. It pays for the, we brought in a facilities management software, so facilities could deal with work orders. It includes Archive Social, which is a requirement to follow the public records law for all of our social media accounts to be archived and maintained. It require, it covers the town's PR services as well.
Any further debate or discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote using our yellow cards. All in favor, raise your cards, please. And any opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. Onto Article 40, Town Events Fund. Ms. Hegeman, do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 40, Town Events Fund, as printed in the warrant, and as funding therefore, raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 to be added to any balance in the general ledger account 0200-10-199-70-78120, for the purpose of running or supporting community events and programs sponsored by the town, and reclassify the account name as Town Events.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any debate or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to another vote with our cards. All in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 41, the Veteran Exemption Clause 221.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 41, Veteran Exemption Clause 221, as printed in the war, 22I, 22I, as printed in the warrant, and accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22I, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, Clause 22A, Clause 22B, Clause 22C, Clause 22E, and Clause 22F, by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, to be effective for applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Demkowsky, do you have an explanation for this motion?
Yes, if you would like one. This is for, so this is the veterans' exemptions. Currently, with our other exemptions, the blind and elderly, we provide a COLA increase to them. This would apply that same COLA increase to the veterans.
Thank you. Mr. Golda?
Yes, thank you. If I could add that this is something that town meeting approved, a veterans' exemption in a previous town meeting, and all we're doing now is asking for a cost of living increase for them, which is what we do for all exemptions. We try to find exemptions wherever state, the state will allow us for any kinds of hardships, and where they give us that option, we usually approve them, which we have for veterans, and this is for a cost of living increase for the veterans as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other debate or discussion? Seeing none, we'll use our cards to vote on this article also. All in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and it's back to Jim.
Thank you, Lisa. And that brings us to Article 42, Acceptance of Lake Boone Dam Easements. I need a motion, Mr. Constanzos.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 42, Acceptance of Lake Boone Dam Easements, as printed in the warrant, to, A, authorize the select board to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, permanent and/or temporary easements to enable the town to undertake the Lake Boone Dam repair and approval project, including, without limitation, for the construction, alteration, installation, maintenance, improvement, repair, replacement, and/or relocation of the Lake Boone Dam, and for any and all purposes incidental or related thereto, in, on, and under certain parcels of land.
I have a motion made and seconded.
Hold on, there's still some more. This is page two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And land adjacent to and within 200 feet of said parcels. Said parcels located on or near Zero Barton Road, and shown more particularly on a plan entitled, "Easement Plan of Lake Boone Dam," dated 03/18/2024, March 18th, 2024, prepared by Weston and Sampson. Said plan on file with the town clerk, as said plan may be amended, and further be authorized the select board to enter into all agreements and take any and all actions as may be necessary or appropriate to carry out the foregoing purposes.
And now I have a motion, and that's made and seconded under Article 42. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant. Do we have any debate on Article 42? Anticipating a question, Ms. Demkowsky, can I ask you why there's no dollar figure in the motion?
Certainly. The, any funding that is needed for this would come from previously appropriated funds.
Thank you. And seeing no debate, I think we are ready for a vote. This motion requires a two-thirds majority. The vote again is on the main motion under Article 42. We will use our clickers. Voting will be open for 20 seconds, beginning now. And voting is closed. By a vote of 72 to 5, the vote passes. That brings us to Article 43, Amendment to the General Bylaw Governing Posting of Town Meeting Warrants. Do we have a motion, Ms. Freesha?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 43, Amendment to the General Bylaw Governing Posting of Town Meeting Warrants, by deleting the existing Section 3 and replacing it with a new Section 3 as printed in the warrant, and further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the general bylaw.
I have a motion made and seconded under Article 43. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant. Do we have any debate? Ms. Demkowsky, maybe a word of explanation would help.
Yes, so this just decreases the amount of physical posting locations of the town meeting warrants. Currently, we, under our bylaw, they are required to be posted in Buscemi's Liquor Store, Warren Insurance Agency, et cetera, and we do not feel that people are actually going to those locations to read our town meeting warrant. With the update in social media and our website, all the information can be found there, as well as in the legally required posting places, which would be the town building. We still post it in the library. We could still put it in the police station. This just eliminates those extra locations that are really not where people are going to look at this information any longer.
Would this mean I could no longer prepare for town meeting at the liquor store anymore?
No, feel free.
All right, thank you. We'll go to debate. Side microphone.
Just had a confirming, I think it was in the explanation in the warrant, that we're still going to get physical warrants for, because it does say town meeting warrants, which seems a little confusing. So annual town meeting warrant, like what we receive, will continue, correct?
Yes, correct.
And I just thank you finally for getting things online, because it's much harder to come down to town hall and see them, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any additional debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. This requires only a simple majority. I think we'll just use our cards on this one. All is in favor of the main motion under Article 43, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Article 44, Amendment to the General Bylaw Government of Town Meeting. Do I have a motion, Mr. Tool?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 44, Amendment to the General Bylaw Government of Town Meeting, to amend the general bylaw, Article 2, Government of Town Meeting, Section 7, by deleting the existing Section 7 and replacing it with a new Section 7 as printed in the warrant, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it can be in compliance with the numbering format of the general bylaw.
I have a motion made and seconded under Article 44. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant. Ms. Demkosky, again, I think a brief word of explanation might help.
Certainly. All this article does is replace where time meeting, town meeting time is being published. Johnson, Trustman, and Wadsworth no longer produces the document. It is published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. I will just point out the highlighted phrase on the screen that was not underlined and bolded in your warrant, but that is also new information, as it may be amended from time to time. So just changing the publication, that we will continue to follow town meeting time as produced by the Moderators Association.
Thank you. Is there any debate? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Again, this requires a simple majority. The vote is on the main motion under Article 44. We'll just use our cards. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. And those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 45, Amendment to the General Bylaw Town Finance and Administration. Ms. Hegeman.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 45, Amendment to the General Bylaw Town Finance and Administration, to amend the general bylaw, Article 4, Town Finance and Administration, Section 11, revolving funds by inserting a new revolving fund for EV charging stations, as printed in the warrant, and further to set the FY26 spending limit on set fund at $30,000.
I have a motion made and seconded under Article 45. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant. And Ms. Demkosky, I think a brief explanation might help.
Yes, so this article, last August, we were awarded a grant that would install two public EV charging stations. So the grant received from the state covered the full expense of installation of these. One is at the Pompositica Community Center, the other one is at Stowe Community Park. If we do not have this article, then taxpayer funds are paying for people to use that and paying for their electricity. This fund would allow us to collect the revenue from those stations and then pay for the electricity usage and any maintenance of the stations.
Thank you, and we do have some debate. I'll start at the front microphone.
Dan Barstone, 99 Pine Point Road. I support this. I want to say how important it is, given the tragic changes at the federal level, diminishing action on climate and so on. This is all the more important. I also want to recognize that the town was cited for its climate action with an award and recognition. I want to support that.
Thank you. Side microphone.
Mark Forges, White Pond Road. We're adding money, we're putting money out in a pocket somewhere for the $30,000. But that's what we're doing. We're asking for money to be a spending limit.
May I answer that first, because that's incorrect?
Okay.
Let's let the gentleman finish.
Let me get to the question. The question is that, is there going to be a cost to the taxpayer for these EV charging stations in any way, shape, or form? Or does the charge that you pay at the station when you charge your car offset that?
Ms. Demkosky?
So that's what this article does. We are not appropriating any funding. Under the law, we need to have a limit of what we can spend on a revolving fund. This article would allow us to take the payments from people that are using the public stations, pay for the electricity, and pay for all maintenance. If this does not pass, then taxpayer money will be paying for those electricity usages.
Okay, thanks.
Side microphone.
Debbie Woods, Great Road. So, Mr. Moderator, I'm just confused with all the numbers and the ins and outs. So, right now, if I go up to a charging station at Pompo, I plug in my credit card, plug in my car, it charges me $2.95 to charge at my car. I pay that $2.95. So I'm, I appreciate not spending town money on this, so I guess I'm confused. If I'm being charged on my credit card $2.95, where is the, where is the town being charged? And why is this needed? I appreciate it being a no charge town, but I'm confused as to the Gazintas and the Gazadas, I guess.
Ms. Demkosky?
So currently, so, two things. We obviously had not received the grant as of last town meeting, so we could not have had this in place prior. The grant came in, the stations were installed and went live in April. So we have had usage since that time. That, those funds come in and go into the general fund. Any maintenance on the system, we would have to appropriate out through a line item at town meeting, unless a revolving account is created, which allows us to take your $2.95, perhaps pay $2.50 for the electricity, and $0.45 is stored for maintenance and future costs.
So if my credit card is charged for $2.95, how does that get to the town? I guess I'm confused with how it all works.
So currently, currently or in the future?
Currently and then in the future.
So it comes in through the software that provides the EV charging stations. We get a deposit into our bank account. As it stands today, that just goes into general fund. We appropriate it out to use however we need. With this account created, that $2.95 goes, still comes in through the bank account, goes into a separate account that can only be used to maintain these EV charging stations.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate on Article 45? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. I want to use the clickers. This does require only a simple majority. The question again is on the main motion under Article 45. Voting will be open for 20 seconds, beginning now. And voting is closed. By a vote of 91 to 3, the motion passes. Article 46, New General Bylaw Governing Single Use Plastic Bags. Do I have a motion, Ms. Birch McMichael?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 46, New General Bylaw Governing Single Use Plastic Bags, to add a new Article 19 to the Stowe General Bylaws as printed in the warrant, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the general bylaws.
I have a motion made and seconded under Article 46. The Finance Committee's favorable recommendation is in the warrant, and we have a presentation from Mr. Epstein. Try it again, Arnie.
Try it now. Hello? Thank you. Hi, I'll start again. I'm Arnie Epstein, Chair of the Stowe Green Advisory Committee. We are sponsoring Article 46, A Bylaw Governing Single Use Plastic Bags. Oops. Just to give you a sense of the use of single-use plastic bags in the state, we use almost 2.5 billion plastic bags each year. This is enough to cover the entire state coastline with 300 bags per foot each year. As you can see in the graph in front of you, there is a small amount of recycling for these plastic bags, but the overwhelmingly, overwhelming percent of these plastic bags are disposed of after their initial use. To summarize what the intent of this bylaw is, it's to reduce the number of single-use plastic checkout bags and promote reusable or recyclable bags. The reduction in single-use plastic bags will have a positive impact on the environment, including minimizing litter and reducing our carbon footprint as plastic bags are made from oil and natural gas. Want to stress that the bylaw only applies to thin plastic checkout bags. It does not apply to items already wrapped in plastic or bagged in the store by the customer. And there are additional exceptions where there is not a suitable substitute. The bylaw will be enforced by the Board of Health and take effect in January of 2026. I just want to point out that Stowe would certainly by no means be the first community in the state to enact such a bylaw. The area in blue that you see are communities in the state that already have similar bylaws in place. As you can see, many of our neighboring towns have such a bylaw already in place, and they cover 70% of state residents already. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Why don't you stay there in case there are questions? Do we have any debate on Article 46? Side microphone.
Richard Fishman, Taylor Road. I think this is great. I'm just wondering why there are so many exemptions. It seems that there are so many listed at 4.1 that I'm wondering what it actually covers.
The, the primary use of the bylaw is for checkout bags. For instances where the item is already wrapped in plastic, it would seem, it seemed to us and in most other bylaws in other communities exempt items that are already wrapped in plastic. Or, for example, if you go to the supermarket, take produce, and put it in a plastic bag yourself, that would be exempted as well. And the other exemptions have to do with cases where a suitable substitute cannot be found, such as a dry good store, where it would be difficult for them to find a replacement. So what we've done is focused on checkout bags. We think that's one that can be and has been implemented successfully throughout the state to date.
Thank you. Front microphone.
Nancy Shepherd, Harvard Road, Stowe. I'm sure that I'm for this, but I don't quite understand what it means. Does it mean there will be no more plastic bags in the grocery store, that maybe they'll give us paper bags? Or could you clarify that a little bit?
So what, there would be no more, for example, at the supermarket, as you check out with your items from the supermarket, you would not be given one of the single-use plastic bags you currently have. You would have the option of bringing your own reusable bag, or it would be up to the supermarket itself to provide you with the option of perhaps purchasing a reusable bag or, or providing you with a recyclable, probably, paper bag.
Thank you.
Front microphone.
I would just like to add, it's my understanding that our grocery store in town is aware of this and actually has been working with other towns as well, implementing the banning of the plastic bags at the registers. And the only other comment I wanted to make is, I want to extend a sincere appreciation to Mr. Epstein, not just for this effort, but for all of his efforts, which now has proclaimed Stowe as a community leader in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for green initiatives. And that's significant, because it actually opens up the town of Stowe to a pool of $60 million in grant money to extend and further our reduction of carbon blueprints. So thank you so much, Arnie.
And?
Thank you.
Front microphone.
Alan Fierce, Red Aker World. What he said. You know, I brought the paper up here, because the front page story talks about the state's naming Stowe as a climate leader community. And Arnie is also our energy manager for the town and has been leading that effort with the grants that we've gotten over the years. And as far as I know, he's still working as a volunteer in that position. I wish one of these years, we were here voting on a warrant article to give him a salary for all the work he's been doing. But I just wanted to thank Arnie for all of his efforts.
Thank you. I think that's enough. Thank you. Side microphone.
Mike Jordan, 166 Packard Road in Stowe. I'm afraid I'm here as the naysayer. I think this is, you know, a very well-meaning piece of legislation, but I think it's ultimately self-defeating. At least in our house, when we get the checkout bags from, from the grocery, we don't waste them, we don't, you know, throw them away for nothing. We use them to line, you know, wastepaper baskets, other trash containers, and stuff like that, so they get reused. If this legislation goes through, we'll still be using the same number of plastic bags, but now we'll have to pay for them. Okay? The other thing is that, you know, we're being pushed to use these, you know, multi-use, you know, recyclable bags. Those bags have a considerable carbon footprint. All right, those ones that we do the thick plastic, use a lot more plastic. And the data that I've seen, say, it takes years of use of one of those multi-use bags before you can, you know, recover the environmental impact that creating the bag itself uses. And so unfortunately, you know, it's a well-meaning piece of legislation, but I think it's ultimately self-defeating. It's going to be massively inconvenient. People are going to be going to the grocery, you're going to have a cart full of groceries, and the clerk's going to say, well, how are you going to take these home? We're not going to help you. You know? Otherwise, you're going to be down to spending, you know, a dollar or whatever it is for one of these multi-use bags, which are in fact bad for the environment. I'm going to say vote no.
Thank you. Arnie, do you care to respond?
Yes, I'm just, I certainly applaud the resident for continuing to reuse his, reuse his single-use plastic bags. But as we showed on the slide, unfortunately, most residents do not. So it's a very small percentage of single-use plastic bags that actually do get reused. The, the point about reusable bags needing to be actually reused in order for them to create a positive environmental impact is correct. We hope when you do either purchase or get a reusable, reusable- We hope when you do either purchase or get a reusable, reusable bag, that you do in fact reuse it. So I guess that is my response to that.
Thank you. Front microphone.
Hi, Kirsten Erbs, 20 Sudbury Road. Couple points. First of all, Europe has been doing this for about 20 years at least, and it's working there, so I can't imagine it can't work here. The other piece is, by the time you get most plastic bags home from the grocery store now, there's a hole in them. And even though we're using them in the backyard for our dog, or in trash barrels in our house, half of the bags I'm throwing out because they're pierced by the time we get home with the items. So, yes, it is inconvenient to remember the bags, and it's a pain in the neck if they're at home, but we just need to be conscious of doing it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Side microphone.
Guy Washburn, 35 Redacre Road. I do support the issue, but I also am cognizant of time. I call the question.
We only have one more speaker. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to take that, and then we'll see if we need you to renew that. Front microphone.
Okay. Pam Weathers, 89 West Acton Road. I've been doing this personal recycling for 50 years. I just keep the cotton bags in my car. You cannot forget them that way, and it's really easy. So I really am in favor of this. I wish we could reduce and eliminate a lot more of the plastic. This is a start, but it's not going to take us as far as we should go.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers, I think we are ready for a vote. This requires a simple majority. We will be using our clickers. The vote again is on the main motion under Article 46. Voting will be open for 20 seconds, beginning now. And voting is closed. By a vote of 78 to 7, the motion passes. No applause, please. I think we've had enough. Let's go to our last motion, and Ms. Freesha.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn the meeting to the town election on May 17th, 2025, commencing at 10:00 a.m. at Center School in said town of Stowe, and then and there to act on Article 47 for such election of officers as listed in the warrant, and thereafter, at the close of the polls, to dissolve this meeting.
A motion made and seconded to adjourn and dissolve after the election. This requires a simple majority. We'll use our cards. All those in favor, please signify by raising them. And opposed? I didn't think so. Thank you. The motion passes. And with that, I will gavel this meeting to a close. Thank you very much, all, for your attendance and your hard work.